Good evening, everyone.
Hello. All right, I'm just gonna do a quick check for quorum here. I see Randy and Gretchen.
And Jeff.
And there's Jeff. Good. I think we're just waiting for Jenny and Devin. Let me check on Devin. Oh, no, Devin's in. Okay, so I think we're just waiting for Jenny. Notice in just a moment, she was on with us on the curriculum committee. Okay. I'm going to admit the public since we have quorum here. Good. All right. And we are streaming and recording. We will call to order this regular meeting of the Eastern Board of Education at 7:31 PM on January 12th, 2021. Members in attendance are myself, Devin Wyble, Randy Hicks, Jeff Parker, Gretchen Goldstein, and I'm just gonna check again briefly for Jenny. And I think we're just waiting on Jenny. That takes us to the approval of minutes. Item number two. We have the December 2nd, December 8th, and December 16th. I think we'll start with December 2nd, 2020 Eastern Board of Education Special Meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
So moved.
Thank you, Randy.
Or Gretchen.
I think Gretchen seconded. Yes. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the question. All in favor?
Hi.
I see Gretchen, Jeff, Randy, Jenny, myself, and Devin. Good. Very good. Thank you, Devin. That motion passes six to zero. That takes us to the December 8th, 2020 Eastern Board of Education Regular Meeting. Board Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Randy.
Kevin.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the question. All in favor? Hi.
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 Good. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. And then finally, our December 16th, 2020 Eastern Board of Education Special Meeting. Entertaining motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Jeff. Seconded by Jenny. Oh, Devin. Sorry, Jenny raised her hand. Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? All right, very good. Call the question. All in favor?
Hi.
Excellent motion approved unanimously. Thank you very much. That takes us to the public comment section. We do have a lot of people on tonight and a lot of meaty topics to get into. So just want to remind everyone that we do have a limit on the time. That time will be three minutes and I'll start a timer for each person. Everyone should be able to indicate by way of in the participant window. If you show the participant window, you should be able to raise your hand in the participant window. And I see Lisa Flouette. Sorry if I didn't do justice to your last name. And it's not Lisa, it's least.
Hi. Thank you for acknowledging me. Yes, my name is Leez Flouette, and I'm an Eastern resident, and I'm gonna make very brief comments. I just wanted to thank this board for the work you are doing in such incredibly difficult and unprecedented times in managing schools during a pandemic. Very, very challenging task, and I don't know there's many of us who would sign up for it. I also want to take a minute to thank Dr. Harrison for his leadership and his courage to speak out about what is right. You may hear some conversation about Facebook posts or wording or inappropriate wording. And I want to strongly urge this board to not capitulate to a very small but loud group of naysayers who seem to want to detract from his incredibly good work that he is doing in these times to support our town, our schools, and most importantly, our children. So that is all, and thank you very much for acknowledging me.
Thank you, Leez. Next up, I think we have Julianne.
Hi. Hello, everyone. Thank you for listening. Julianne Licimelli, Wells Hill Road in Easton. As an alumni of all Easton schools, someone who's gone through school in Washington DC for the past four years and part of a group of alumni in Easton and Reading working to advocate for social justice. I was proud to see the way Dr. Harrison responded to Wednesday's attack on our Capitol and our democracy. And the violence toward our government assaulted the values that I was raised to uphold in this community. I'm talking about discourse, peaceful protests, upholding our democracy. And the importance of rooting out hate and supporting everyone is something I believe we can all agree on. And it's not time to sit back and assume our kids will absorb these values without denouncing and discussing this attack within our school system. To ignore Wednesday's events in school is to normalize them, and we cannot afford to do that as a town, state, or country. Dr. Harrison is leading the way towards a responsible, equitable, and necessary response to these events. And in the weeks ahead, there will be more events like this, and we must be prepared to make it clear that their message of hate and violence will not be accepted here. This starts in our classrooms of all ages, and we are experiencing live events that will show up in our history books years from now, just like other major historical moments that these kids already read about. Let's do the right thing and not give in to fear and partisanship and unite over rejecting and reflecting on the abhorrent events of Wednesday in our schools. Thanks.
Thank you, Julianne. Carolyn.
Good evening. I have, I wrote stuff down or else, you know, I could go on forever. I too would like to thank Dr. Harrison, as he is well aware.
If everybody can please state their name.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Carolyn Oppenheim, 25 Hunting Ridge Road. My apologies, Gretchen. Dr. Harrison knows that I am fully prepared to go toe-to-toe when I don't agree with something. But I am very happy and proud to have seen the letter that you wrote for us and for our students, and we appreciate your support. It was a difficult day for, I think, for the entire country. So we appreciate your support in that. Number two, the other thing is, is I'm going, I'll be interested to hear the discussion, and I'm sure that it will go on regarding proceeding with schooling and going in. All in seems a little premature, given that we've seen increasing numbers. I think the last time I looked at it was 48. Today, it's 55 out of 100 in Easton. If I'm correct, I think it was 48 last week. And, you know, I don't get how, I just read an article that all of Connecticut were at 10.7% or, which is one out of 10 people, which doesn't sound right to me, but I didn't get to read the whole article. But it's getting worse. And so I hope, I'm looking forward to hearing what the administration has to say. That being said, I know that we're having, that many people are having difficulties with kids at home. I myself.
You're muted.
Carolyn. Carolyn, I think you got muted somehow.
And you still are.
Yep, I'm trying to center. There we go. Sorry.
Does it better? Okay. So I realize that it's difficult to listen to. But, you know, being said that, I know that a lot of people are struggling, a lot of kids are struggling at home and whatnot. So I'm not gonna fight necessarily to not go in. I'm interested to hear what's gonna happen, but I'd like to mention, I think that it's really important, as sad as it feels, I think sometimes, that the administration, that the, needs to really lock it down even further than we did in the fall with the recess and there's no, there should be no reason for entire grades to go out. There has to be, we have to figure out a way where we don't, we're not getting rid of, like, one kid gets COVID and the entire grade has to, has to be quarantined for two weeks. That's unsustainable. I think we were, I think one of my kids was quarantined twice for two weeks. Out of the six weeks, we were in full, you know, full-time learning. That's not sustainable. So while I will not fight the idea of going back full-time, I'm not sure I agree with it, and if we're gonna do it, we have to figure out a way to make it better than it was.
Thank you, Carolyn. Thank you. Hillary.
Good. Thank you, John. Good evening. My name's Hillary Desmond, and I live at 71 North Park Avenue in the Easton. And I have two children, one at Helen Keller and one at Joel Barlow. I wanted to thank Dr. Harrison for the letter he sent out after the historic events in the US Capitol. He displayed a strong and compassionate leadership. I was glad to see my sons being educated and equipped with the necessary tools to process and unpack the events. I've heard there's been some controversy about Dr. Harrison's letter and specifically his mentioning the disturbing image of the Confederate flag paraded around the US Capitol. So I wanted to share life experience to illustrate just how much Dr. Harrison's letter meant to our family because we've been witness to what happens when schools fail to address symbols of hate. In 2017, we resided in a very similar small New England town. Over the duration of the year, Nazi swastikas started appearing about town. They were found in parks, in our schools, and in the street. Rather than discuss how to talk about and address it, the community chose to sweep it under the rug. People stated, "This is not our town. It must be outsiders," or "Who knows why kids do such things?" The town worried that real estate values would be negatively affected if word of these incidents got out. So everyone attempting to bring up the issue was silenced. They were removed from the town Facebook pages, and individuals were called and told not to talk to the press. And we were told specifically by the superintendent of schools, this was not an issue they would address any further. My neighbors are mixed race like my family, but they are also Jewish. Their eighth-grade son was an honors student at that time and very active in town sports. School yearbooks arrived that year, and the eighth-grade class passed them around. When he received his yearbook back, there were swastikas on multiple pages. Imagine if you were 14 years old, your whole world revolves around your friends, and a white supremacist symbol of hatred against you is drawn all over your yearbook. All because it was too hard for leadership to face the issue and educate about the harm of the symbol when it first started, thus allowing it to permeate throughout the town. To this day, no one has ever acknowledged responsibility or been held accountable. So my neighbor's son withdrew, his grades plummeted, he stopped participating in town sports. And all of us, my family, my neighbor's family, and many others in town lived in a state of distress and fear. Other incidents then occurred, including one where children had become so emboldened that to yell at my young elementary school son, "Go back to your country," along with other racial slurs. I realize what happened in the Capitol is difficult to talk about, just like Nazi symbols. There is an insurrection, and there are horrifying images being projected everywhere. We'd all prefer to shelter our children, but when we are silent and do not educate, as what happened in my previous town, we cause more harm. There is an uncomfortable topic, but it's real, and we cannot place the comfort of adults above the well-being and education of children. Dr. Harrison did the hard work. He displayed leadership and compassion by acknowledging the insurrection on January 6, and he understood how important it was to the health and safety of our children for it to be addressed in age-appropriate ways. So I wanted to personally thank Dr. Harrison for caring about our children. Thank you for promoting responsible, factual, developmentally appropriate ways to help them navigate these awful events. And I am finally very thankful to have you as the light to guide my children and ensure that we are living in a community that understands and upholds the principles that are foundational to our country. So, thank you.
Thank you, Hillary. Sergi, family.
Hi, Robin Abramowitz, Forum Warehouse Road. Thank you. That was a very moving story, and I agree that the last week's events have been difficult for all and appreciate their attention. Would have been nice if they could have been in school even for part of it, because I think the in-school conversations could have really promoted a lot of learning on our children's part, which gets me to what I want to talk about is our moving forward, you know, with our change of model in the coming days to weeks. We are 10 months into this pandemic. It doesn't look like it's going anywhere quickly. It's, you know, not super heartening to hear the numbers, as Carolyn pointed out, and I think we have to be mindful of them. But I also think we have to be mindful that I still don't think as a practicing pediatrician, that in-school transmission is a big issue. It's not a non-issue, and I want to keep our teachers and I want our students to stay safe. But we have to remember that there is a whole other side to this pandemic, and our kids being home and trying to educate in this, in these models, is gonna be some of the collateral damage, unfortunately. So I think we need to, looking forward, think a little bit outside the box. I think we have to look at the schedules moving forward and see how we can get more instructional, normal instructional time into the day and weeks to come. And, you know, that may look, have to look at the calendar that I know has been set in stone for a long time, but it feels a little disheartening that we have one week of hybrid, and then we have a four-day weekend, and then we go into all-in. And if I'm not mistaken, Wednesdays are still shortened days, and I just think we're just chipping away at the time that our kids need to learn. I think Carolyn made a great point about looking forward. Yeah, the host muted me.
Thank you.
We, I think, you know, there are likely going to be cases and exposures moving forward. It's something we need to be prepared for. So entire grade quarantines are disruptive to large groups of students. So how can we minimize that? I think our kids have done a great job adapting to wearing masks, and why I think mask breaks are important. I think we should reconsider masking at recess so that if a grade is outside and there was one kid from one class that tests positive, we can focus on that one class because they've been masked outside. I just think we need to think ahead because this isn't gonna change next week, next month, six months from now. And we want our kids to be educated. Everyone, you know, has to move forward to make, not just lose large slots of time as a community. So that's kind of what I wanted to say, and thank you all for your work. Thank the teachers. They are working so hard. Nothing is unappreciated. I'm just trying to look forward and ahead and hope we can all get everyone vaccinated and safe as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Jasmine.
Hi, thank you for listening. My name is Jasmine Jenna Algonquin Lane in Easton. I want to thank Dr. Harrison for the letter he put out. Paulo Freire was a Brazilian educator most famously known for his book Pedagogy of the Oppress, and he says there is no such thing as neutral education. Education is political. Teaching is political. From the access kids are given with materials, who is represented, who is reflected, and to what side of history is told. I thank Dr. Harrison for choosing to denounce the white supremacy and antisemitism that occurred at the Capitol and for encouraging our teachers to have these discussions. I urge our education leaders to not make this a one-time discussion. This is important to continue and to have these critical discussions because silence costs lives and silence speaks volumes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jasmine. Roshanak. Let me try that again.
Hi.
There you go. Good.
This is Roshanak Govami, Stones Throw Road. I just wanted to, like many before me, thank Dr. Harrison for his leadership for being proactive to talk about this issue, the problem, the issue that happened at the Capitol on Wednesday. Head on, I appreciate the fact. I feel very lucky and grateful to live in a town where my kids go to a school system where the teachers are directed to address current events such as this one with the children. Our kids spend, well, quarantine notwithstanding, they spend most of the time at school. And the teachers are our collaborators, us as parents, to bring up our kids as the human beings and members of society that they are supposed to be. I want to thank Dr. Harrison for his leadership. I think it's absolutely necessary for this kind of discussions to take place in the schools in obviously an age-appropriate manner in the classrooms and, you know, silencing a conversation just because it's uncomfortable for some is basically won't get us anywhere as a society. I also wanted to touch on the subject that a couple of commentators before me said much better than me about the fact that it seems that we're rushing towards opening full-time. I just, I think I was a little bit caught off guard when basically the emails from the schools came about the schedule that we have in coming up for the next few weeks and the fact that we basically suddenly head on going into full open. So people before me said it better. I just wanted to add my voice to this one question. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki, I think you had your hand raised, and as we unmuted somebody, I think I accidentally put your hand down, so I'm gonna put you next, and then we'll go to Deirdre.
Hi, Nikki Kowdawi, Staples Road. I also want to thank Dr. Harrison. The last, I mean, throughout all of this, we've, in my house, we've had to have a lot of difficult discussions about race and just darker skin in general, and it hits home for us pretty hard. So I appreciate the fact that you, you know, sent the article and ways that we can talk to our children. Our children are online and on technology all the time, and to think that they're hidden from any of this would be foolish. So thank you for giving us a little bit of an avenue to speak about that. So I really do appreciate it. In terms of school, I also, I agree with Robin that I would love to see, like, masks out at school when, I mean, out at recess. When I hear, like, they're playing football or soccer and stuff like that, and it's like, I love it, but I would just love it if there was a mask on as well. I've asked my kids to do that, but they don't have to. That's their mask break. So that would be something I'd love to see happen. I would also like to, I know that there's a lot of people in the community, I mean, Robin, for instance, I know is extremely knowledgeable and quite a few others, that we could form some kind of community panel that could help educate people, that could help contact tracing, that could help us to stay in school and kind of alleviate some people's worries if they have them, just to kind of lay out more of, you know, if you're not in direct contact for a certain amount of time and this and that. So I would hope, I would just like to kind of think outside the box a little bit as well, and I know that there are people who are willing to volunteer to do that. So I would just like to, you know, maybe throw that out there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Nikki. Deirdre.
Good evening. I'm Deirdre Price. I'm a professor of educational leadership at Sacred Heart University. I've lived in this town almost my whole life, helped write the health curriculum that's at the high school right now, worked at the, worked at the high school for quite a while. And I also wanted to just, just share my feelings about the importance of addressing the issue that happened on the past week. That's an ongoing issue with the students and the staff. I don't think there's anything more important than talking to students about democratic principles and their role civically and preparing them to take their own role as adults, which they'll be soon, and making decisions for our country. I think also that it's also a social emotional wellness issue. This is very frightening for many people, understandably, and that our students are looking to educators and parents for optimism and for model for how to handle difficult situations. So I think that this is the time for courageous conversations. And, you know, I just want to commend Dr. Harrison for seeing that and supporting the community and talking with children about this. And I also just want to support the teacher's ability to talk about this in school.
Thank you very much. Suzanne.
Oh, hi. This is Suzanne Turamonte, Virginia Drive, and it's more of a question than a comment. As I looked at the dashboard, the COVID-19 dashboard on the ER9 site tonight, I saw a lot more red than I did green. There's definitely some yellow as well. I'm a very visual person. I think those are some pretty clear colors. When I look at the state's dashboard of COVID cases, the numbers are higher now than they were when we shut down back in November intermittently. And so I'm really concerned about jumping all in and then having to whiplash back out again. You know, we've made the decision in our family to keep the children home for the time being. This week's internet issues widespread did not create a peaceful couple of days, and I do hope that that's resolved moving forward. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about that, but mostly my question is around what's propelling this decision-making when the decision I've seen doesn't really seem to be in accordance with this dashboard that's online. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, seeing no further public comment, we'll move on to board member comment. Any board members have comment? Jeff?
Thank you, John. January the 6th was a very sad day in America's history. Our Capitol was looted, and to date, five people have lost their lives. I've heard some folks say that this crime against our country shows how fragile our democracy is. I disagree. This event and the days that follow proves to me how strong and resilient our democracy is. No group of people from within our great nation or outside of it will overturn our form of government that our fathers and forefathers fought to create and died to protect. Nothing good ever comes from evil. But I can move forward today with the knowledge that our government and way of life is secure. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Any additional board member comment at this time? Devin.
So like so many others, I want to go on the record and thank Dr. Harrison and our school leaders, Dr. Pearson, Ugal, every teacher who is in a classroom with kids, a virtual classroom or an in-person classroom, Ms. Del Conti, Dr. or Mr. Brownstein. My first Tuesday as an educator was September 11th, 2001. I had a class full of freshmen and was 22 years old and didn't know what to do or what to say, but I knew that my job as a teacher that day was to stop teaching and take care of them, make sure that they were okay. Some of them had parents in the building. Thank God they were all safe, but they were scared and they had questions. And they needed someone to listen and hug them and make sure that they were emotionally okay and that they were gonna be okay tomorrow. And my job was to reassure them and to answer questions to the best of my ability. I didn't have all the answers. And not to tell them what to think, but to give them, you know, opportunities and space to talk and to think and to share their fears. as well as kind of their hopes of what was going to get them through to the next day. So as an educator, we don't always get to choose what we are going to talk about that day. Sometimes it's chosen for us. And I'm thankful that we have a team in this town who cares about our kids and puts their mental, physical and emotional health first, and that we have a leader who, even though it's a difficult thing to talk about and definitely a difficult thing to approach because it's uncomfortable and it's scary, that we have someone who, you know, knows what it's like to be in the classroom with his kids and has kids at home and is having a lot of those difficult and uncomfortable conversations. So thank you to each of you. I'm sure it's going to be, there's some difficult roads ahead, but I'm grateful that I have each of you for my kids and for my family and for our town.
Thank you, Devin. Any additional member, a board member comment at this time? Okay. That takes us to reports. So first up will be Dr. Harrison. I would like to propose an adjustment. Dr. Pearson Ugall is going to talk about a couple of items that I think would be well served early in the in the flow of the conversation. So and Stephanie, tell me if you, does it make sense for you to go immediately following Dr. Harrison? Or would you like to go just before the principals?
I think I could, I could go right after Dr. Harrison.
Okay, very good. So unless there's an objection, are we all comfortable with that sort of shuffling of the items in the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I yield my position.
You're right. I have to, I have to ask permission from the person who's getting cut in line. We established that last time. Thank you, Clarence. All right. Very good. All right. So, Dr. Harrison?
Thank you. So I want to start by just addressing some of the comments that were made tonight, and then I'll talk a little about the thinking behind going in for a full in-person. So I know in the community and not just in our community, but many communities around us, we have educators and families and students and young people who are grappling with the world around them and, and what their perception is of how that's unfolding. My goal as an educator is always to support our students and then to support our teachers as they're supporting students in this role as the leader. It is, while I appreciate hearing the, the comments of appreciation, it's hard to hear that much discussion about me and my, and my decisions. And I really want to maintain our focus on our students and, and thinking about the ways that we support them. I've only been in this community in Easton Reading for a short amount of time. What I have found that that is really consistent is that whether or not you have children in the building or had children in the building or past students walking in the building and you are not connected directly with our schools at all, that there is a consistent care for our students. And I think that, that when we think about the support that they need socially and emotionally, I am very humbled and privileged to be a part of being our students' network and, and supporting them in those efforts. I also want to, you know, just take a moment and say huge thank you to our teachers. As Devin mentioned, it is really difficult as, as a teacher when you're confronted with, you have students in front of you and history is unfolding right, right before your eyes. And I, what I saw was that we had teachers who were willing to stand in that space with our students. And one of the things that we talked about with our principals and our leadership team is ways to be supportive of students and to be conscious of, of being on the side of supporting them and thinking about who we want to be as a community and as a nation and, and be really careful not to go down the political pathway. And, and that was part of the intention of me reaching out to teachers before I reached out to our families, just to remind them of our responsibility as educators and to think about taking a very measured approach as we're supporting our students. We are living in a very divided period of our history. And I think that for those of us who are in these roles as educators, particularly as education leaders, we are trying to think about how to engage with the world in our leadership role and then also in our personal lives. And I just want to take a moment and reassure our community that when it comes to my public statements in my role as a superintendent, I'm always going to be student centered and really focused on our broader goals for our students. We're, we're here tonight in focusing on academic excellence and building a caring community and really preparing them for future learning. And, and I think that that's really important. I also recognize that, you know, that, that many of us, myself included, that we are part of networks outside of the work that we do in our schools. And, you know, when I am engaging with my own personal connections, I want to make sure that, that no one feels like I'm speaking in my role as a superintendent and really recognizing that, that when those lines get blurred, it can be really confusing and challenging for people. Please note that this is four months in of working with me as your leader in this community. What you will see from me consistently is that I am always willing to do whatever it takes to keep the focus on our students and keep them at the center and to make sure that our community feels supported and has the resources they need to move forward our goals that we have with our students. One of the things that we've spent a lot of time talking about, obviously, is the, the different learning models that we're shifting in and out of. I've gotten a lot of questions and understandably so about how we are interpreting the, the, the numbers, particularly since we have a pretty robust dashboard. Over the last several months since the school year started, we have learned a lot about this virus and, and, and had lots of discussions about what in-school spread looks like and, and really thinking about our mitigation strategies that we have in place. Are they doing their job at limiting or minimizing the, the amount of spread with our students and staff? We've also thought about this, the guidance that we, that we received from the CDC and then also from the state and how that guidance has evolved over time. One of the things that I've shared with people that I think has been really helpful when we talk about these guideposts of when we should be considering model changes, we always have to remember that, that we're talking about the, the risks. So there's, there's no previous data coming into a brand new pandemic that says this is exactly what you can expect when your community numbers get to this. What we've been given are these guideposts that say the risk of in-school spread increases as the, the community positive cases increase. And so we started off the year being very conservative with how we were interpreting those guideposts. Over time, the, the lessons that we learned in our district and more importantly, in the districts around us helped us to feel a little bit more comfortable with those numbers being higher and, and understanding that, that the, the that the risks that we were comfortable with were a little bit higher than we had seen earlier in the school year. And part of that was, was because we hadn't seen or experienced a significant spread within our schools. I talk about the risk because I think it's important to note that we recognize that there's, there's nothing that we could do to completely eliminate the risk. As we're considering the risk of in-school spread, we're also considering the, the, the risk that increased with our students. So the longer that we are out of school and, and students don't have that face-to-face learning and interaction and the social connections, the, their risk of adverse conditions related to their social emotional learning increase. And so as we are trying to weigh those risks and just as I started with the first conversation, really thinking about our students at the forefront and then really thinking about ways that we support our staff, that, those are the pieces that led to us thinking about what, what, what our path going forward looks like. That said, even though our plan is to, is to move to a full in-person learning and, and stay in that model as long as we can, please know that, that we are continuing to look at the data on a regular basis, that we're continuing the conversations with our health directors. And then most importantly, you know, when we did, created the reopening plan over the summer, since then, we've learned a lot. And so we will continue to make adjustments to how we are implementing those mitigation strategies with the clear focus of making sure that we're keeping our students and our staff safe. I've tried to do my best with communicating all of these kind of shifting goalposts and signposts and changing models and all of those things in, in ways that are that are as concise as possible. Brevity is not always my, my biggest strong suit. And so welcome any of our families to reach out to me for some additional discussion if, if you want some more information. And I'll be working on trying to help craft a community message that, that does the same thing so that we could make sure that we're all on the same page in thinking about what's best for our students. And that's all I have for my report now and look forward to talking about our proposed budget later in the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Any questions for Dr. Harrison before we move on? From the board? Yes, Randy?
And I don't have the screen up in front of me, but I'll do it from memory. And I think one of the members of the audience there or public mentioned it. Easton's number is roughly 55, I think, in the latest updated thing. When you extrapolate that or when you do the math, 55 over 10,000 and then you multiply by the citizens in town, it comes up with five. But when I look on the right, top right-hand corner, it says, I think it says eight. Can we square those two numbers? Actually, it's more than eight. When you add SSES, I'm sorry, Rydell, when you add SSES and HKMS, it's 16, 18, whatever it is.
So are, Randy, are you talking about students exposed or students positive and isolating? Because, so the numbers, when we talk about cases per 100,000, those would be positive cases, which is different than us tracking who's been exposed and in quarantine.
Okay, so we have four positives. But the town has a total of five based on the cases per 100,000.
We, we could have a share of someone at JBHS, but we could also, this could be somebody outside of the school community. Is that, is that accurate?
I don't know if that's a question to me or Rydell, but I guess, I guess 55 over 100,000 makes, is five. When you do the math or four, when you do them, I think it's five. When you do the math of 7,300 residents in Easton. And when it goes up from 43, people are like, oh my gosh, it went up, you know, well, it went up one person. So, and maybe everybody knows that, but I'm just pointing that out. And I just, I wanted to make sure that we're, that these, that we're, I guess portraying the, the information accurately. If we have four between SSES and Helen Keller and again, a share of Joel Barlow, maybe we do, maybe we don't. But according to the far left column there, we have five in Easton. And that includes all 7,300 residents. That's all. Unless I'm missing something, unless that's not what the data is showing. And that, I guess that's more of a question than a statement.
It could also be a function of the reporting timelines, right? One is as of January 12th, one is as of January 11th. And I think there could be a few sort of pieces to it. It's also sort of different mechanisms for reporting. You know, one is sort of self-reported coming in through the schools. That's the far right. And tell me if I've got any of this wrong, because I've been trying to become a student of this. And on the left, this is data from the state.
That's correct.
There's two different modes of data that we're reporting here in this one.
So the three, the three on the left, and I think that's indicated down at the bottom, quarantines and isolations based on self-reported data that's coming into the schools. So the three on the left, cases per hundred, test positivity and hospitalizations are all functions of data we get from the state. But these isolations, which are also really important because they help us understand like the, the ebb and flow of cohorts, people coming in and out and that, that kind of thing. That's, the state doesn't give us that. So we, we derive that from the work that happens during contact tracing and other work that happens at the schools.
Right. So that the number of cases per 100,000 is not connected to this table. The cases per 100,000 are based on active cases in the community right now, not only in the schools. So what you're showing in the table over here are kids in the school right now, right, that are either out due to cases or quarantine. So this number went up to 55 today or 54 in Easton because based on the Westin, Westport, Easton Health District report, we had six new cases as of yesterday, 14 new cases this week.
Yep. So, and we may, we may actually have lead, leading data.
That's not what that chart says, but okay.
I'm sorry, I missed it, Randy.
The chart on the top, we're, this is way in the weeds at this point. It's not relevant, but the chart on the left says the number of cases over 100,000 for the past 14 days. That's not what Devin just said. So I guess I'm confused and we can take this offline and do it another day, but I'm, I'm concerned that this is not accurate. So, but we can take it offline because it's not going to waste people's time tonight going through this. But what it says and what Devin just said are two different things.
Yeah, so Randy.
It's the rolling daily rate per 100,000. So every day when we have an increased cases, you're gonna, you know, in continued active cases, you're, this number is gonna.
For, for the last 14 days, that's the rolling part.
14 days, right. It's a rolling average. So that's, it's gonna go up.
So the number 14 days ago rolls off tomorrow, right?
Right.
Which, which can create spikes and drops and anything else, right? I think that there was a some, a number over 70 for last week in, in one of the towns and like that, that obviously boosts it way up just based on that until that data falls off. We, Randy, I would be absolutely game for a full audit of all this data. Like, it's important that we're getting it right. I believe that it is right, but let's make absolutely certain.
Okeydoke.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments for Dr. Harrison? Okay. Dr. Pearson Ugall?
Thank you. For my report this month, I'd like to follow up on the conversation that we had at last month's meeting regarding student performance. And you might remember that our principals shared a sense of comfort that this fall, while so many things are, are different for all of us, our students are, are making gains academically and that the number of students that require some level of intervention does not vary greatly from what we've seen in years past. And so I asked our principals to provide more granular performance data to show exactly what that looks like over the last three years. So if I can ask Mr. Stinson to pull up the chart that I created, then we can see beginning, beginning with ILA. If you read from left to right, I began with the current year going to 2019, the fall of 2019, and finally 2018. So it's worthwhile to note, and this is very important when, when looking at the Samuel Staples performance data in particular, that many, many students have not been assessed at Samuel Staples. So the teachers in, obviously with the, with the leadership of Mrs. Fox Centura made the purposeful decision to assess those students most in need of intervention at the start of October, which is when our assessment time period opened. And so what you can see in the chart does not represent all of the students in every grade. So while you can see some, some concerns, in particular, I'm looking at grades three, four and five. Also note that in some cases, not even half the students have been assessed yet. So if they were beginning with the students most in need of support, it's not a great surprise that there's a lower it's not a great surprise that there's a lower percentage of kids that that may go because they were beginning with with the kids most in need of support. So the sort of summary statement that the intervention counts are not very different than in years past is based also on what teachers are seeing, both in the in-person classroom and then also in the virtual classroom as well. So what I want to provide this evening is is this chart, and then the next one, which provides the math performance data K eight. And then in next month's meeting, the principals will get into a higher level detail regarding intervention counts and what that support looks like. And I think that that would be an important conversation if we're going to have any discussion about our students' needs and how we are responding to those needs, possibly with adjustments to our curriculum content with extensions, with interventions, with schedules. All of those things should be framed by the performance data that we have. So both academic performance data and then what we're seeing in terms of their social and emotional needs. So this is really the the first step of many to simply provide you an idea of how students are performing this fall in two thousand twenty compared to two thousand nineteen and two thousand eighteen. And if we can take a look at the math tab as well, we can see the math performance information as well. You can see that the the name of the assessment is also provided. For the educators in the group, you know that oftentimes the company names change, but the the content of the assessment doesn't change a great deal. So we moved from Ames Web to Dibbles, and then Acadia's bought Dibbles. It was roughly the the same content in math. A larger change had to occurred in the eighth grade when we made the decision to begin to use the College Board PSAT eight-nine, which is a very, very rigorous assessment for our students. So the eighth and ninth graders in Easton, Reading, and Region Nine all take the same assessment in eighth grade and ninth grade. The benchmark expectation, of course, is different from eighth graders than it is for ninth graders. But that's a challenging assessment, and we give it, we've given it twice in a year. So what we have seen in just the few years that we've we've administered that assessment is that the fall almost acts as a diagnostic, and then it allows our teachers to really use that information to inform instruction. And then the students make solid gains from fall to spring, which is not a typical use of a college board assessment, but it actually has supported some some helpful work in the area of curriculum and instruction for us. Because of the times that we are in currently and the differences in school model participation on the part of our our students, we made the decision this year to administer the NWA MAP assessment to our eighth graders in Easton and in Reading and not the PSAT. So that's a difference this year. We intend to go back to the PSAT next year. Happy to answer any questions that the board members have.
So if I'm reading this correctly, if I wanted to follow a cohort, I would go from left to right and sort of work diagonally, right? So if I wanted to see how are those who are currently third graders, how they did when they were first graders in this assessment, they were eighty-three percent, then they were at ninety percent, and then they were at eighty percent? Is that is that an accurate sort of way to read this?
The screen is is rather small in front of me, but if you're reading on a diagonal and you're tracking in the way that you've described it, yes, that's the way that you would do it.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I did not present it with cohorts. I really did it as a as a grade to grade to compare typical first graders, typical second graders.
Yep, okay. So but we could, I mean, obviously, the data is here. So if we if we wanted to have a view that is cohort view, we could do that, like we have that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Larger and detailed table, and I'm really just really providing you the the high-level view.
Okay. Are there any any questions for Dr. Pearson, you go?
John, can you flip, just flip back to ILA for a second?
Yeah.
I should also note that our kindergarteners are not assessed in the fall of the year. These are our our youngest students. And the first formal assessment that they have occurs at roughly the halfway point in the year. So they will participate in the reading assessment during this winter period.
Stephanie, I'm curious. I mean, there there are two big questions that I have here. One, about what's happening in third, fourth, and fifth grades with those forties. And maybe it's explained by my second question, which is, is the, is column FM and T? Are those a function of the percent at grade or above of all students or just those students tested?
Just the students that have been assessed. And so the the lower numbers, and I'm inferring, and I would need to ask for more detail from either content specialist or Mrs. Fox Centura or Mr. Brownstein. But the way that I understand this is that because they began with the neediest students, that the students who required the most support, the the, this is the percent of the students that were assessed that are in need of that, I'm sorry, it's the percent of the grade. But I think that the number represents more of a concern because they were starting with the students who required the most support. And so the the they went into the assessment knowing that there was a good, a good likelihood that those students would not be at goal.
It it looks, and Randy, you're much better at this exact thing than than I am for sure, is it it looks like that number is a percentage of the overall grade, but a small percentage of the grade was, you know, sort of a lower-than-average percentage of the grade was assessed. So this number is not necessarily indicative of how those being assessed are doing.
If less than half of the grade were actually assessed.
Right.
Using this assessment, then then it's it's hard to make too many conclusions.
Okay.
Well, is it, I mean, it's an assessment of the folks that took the test.
Correct.
It's not necessarily an assessment of the entire grade because less than half the grade took the test.
Right.
So I'm not sure how helpful this is at this point, but I guess the only other, and John, if you had another follow-up question, go ahead. I got one question.
No, go ahead.
It seems like at least ILA, you look at the F and P, and then you go to the NWEA. The percentages. And I think it's the same on the math, you know, sort of in the eighties, you know, obviously, this year ILA is is low, but maybe there's some you know, the data is not great. But it seems like the percentages are much lower. And maybe it's the type of test that's administered SSES compared to that NWEA. What is that? What's driving that?
It it's a different assessment. Much of it has to do with, this is the standardized measure that we use internally. It's not the only measure that we use. And so that's why I'm saying this is the first step of many. So to better understand the students who require tiered intervention, then we would also need to look at the different internal assessments that are used to make those decisions, because this is not, this is not the only measure that we use.
Okay, it just seems like the curve is is materially different between the two tests. And maybe not, but it's, it looks that way, but.
Stephanie, look at the, looking at the ILA for two thousand eighteen for the third grade, they were, they were at eighty-one percent. In third grade and fourth grade, they were at fifty-four percent. And although not all the votes are in from all, from all the constituents, they're currently tracking at forty-two percent. Do we? I mean, that's obviously is not, is not certainly what we used to seeing. Can we identify what's 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 driving that?
I cannot identify it this evening, but it is certainly something that we could report on next month.
Yeah, I mean, it it looks to me like the forty-two, the forty-eight, the forty-two right here are we only measured forty-five of the ninety-two. So just my rough math tells me that's actually a very good number. If we're gonna, if we're coming to forty-two percent.
No, I I think what that number means is that out of the forty-five students, forty-two percent reach goal.
So is that, is that it, Stephanie? Is that?
That it is. And honestly, I would need to ask
Okay.
Fox and Tor to confirm, but my understanding is the percent of of grade.
It's percent of overall grade, not the percentage of people assessed, not the percentage.
Not percent of the students. So of the students that actually took the test.
Yep.
That percent, that's how it factors into the grade. So if you continued and you and you tested a hundred percent of the grade, and the rest of the students who who are tested perform at goal, obviously, that number is going to change a great deal.
I see. And it it may change, especially looking at the previous year at seventy-two percent. That cohort may land, it it's mathematically possible that they land pretty close to seventy-two percent. I see. So that's what you mean when you say that you were assessing those who had the most clear need
Need.
for for assessment first. Okay, I see. I understand now. Thank you.
And so then this would, this information, this data point, in addition to others, would factor into data team and SIT discussions in order to determine the students that need tier-two and tier-three levels of support. So the building leaders also have the counts of the numbers of students who require tiered intervention this fall, different from other years. And what you heard at the last meeting was those numbers are not markedly higher than in other years, which is not to say that our students don't need support, possibly in in different ways. But that the numbers are not dramatically higher, which honestly was was our worst fear, right? And during during this time, that even with the best supports in place, that there would be engagement issues and 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 possibly even that that social, emotional obstacles or conditions might really interfere with learning. And I think what we're, what I hear, what I heard the principal saying at the last meeting was that we are, we are cautiously optimistic. We we don't know yet what the next several months will hold. But at this point, we are not looking at dramatic changes that need to be made to either intervention or curriculum in order for our students to continue to keep pace.
And and specifically at the middle school, it looks as though the current eighth-grade cohort went ninety-six percent, ninety-three percent, ninety-eight percent. Right? The current seventh went ninety-five to ninety-two, and then we only know about the sixth grade in terms of that test. And I think Randy's point about the rigor of that test maybe is is quite different.
Is fair, is fair, absolutely. So we're reporting on the benchmark that's associated with that assessment, but it's not unusual for us to cast a wider net at times and provide additional support beyond simply the benchmark that's that's sort of baked into the.
Okay. Thank you.
So I know you'll have like a better sense once you have like a second data point to kind of see where kids are with growth targets. Like, do you have a sense, especially if kids are hopefully going back into school more? Is the hope, the focus to really start assessing kids to start seeing like it's like how they're going from test one to test two and like what's happening? Especially in like little kid reading?
Yes, yes. So so certainly having whether the students are in person or they're being assessed remotely, having a additional opportunity to assess those students. So typically, it's the it's the kids who receive additional intervention that we really focus on at the mid-year point. We turn out to spend so much time assessing that we're, that we lose instructional time. But at the mid-year point, we will be conducting those assessments.
John, can I just jump in quickly?
Please, Jenny. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I know there have been a lot of obstacles, but it's definitely concerning to me that we don't have we don't have a data point for every kid. And it's, I think that's just even more support at this point for getting students back full in. You know, I know there are health concerns, but we need kids in the building, you know? I mean, if we're gonna, if you are going to be able to finish using these tools and assessing students and figuring out where they are, then then, you know, all the better for them to be in person with their teachers and available, you know, for that testing. I also wanted to know about the possibility of it's been a frustration of mine over the years that that parents are not notified prior to when these assessments are taking place, certainly not specifically. I think we know kind of a general timeframe of when the assessments are given. But I've always wished that I could know, you know, the morning of, you know, to give the kid a hearty breakfast and just sort of know where they are. You know, mentally heading off for the day, not that I want to put it, a testing mood over something for an elementary student, but I think it would be I would appreciate that we maybe consider notifying families when these things are going to be taking place. And then also the reporting of the results. You know, we see them grouped like this, but especially given the circumstances, I wonder if there is an interest in families knowing, where is my kid right now? You know, with the concerns of the lost in-person learning. Sorry, I'm taking a long time to kind of say what I'm trying to say here. And then more frequent benchmarks. Again, not a big advocate for testing, but I think the more frequently we can check in and and have more data points moving forward this spring, we're going to get a better picture. I think I just have kind of a sinking concern that especially at the elementary level. You know, I think middle school students are a little bit more equipped to make growth independently in this distance learning model. More so than our youngest kids, especially kindergarten, first grade, second grade. So I'd be really interested that we we track them as closely as possible.
Yep. Just Jenny, for a little bit of context on some some things that Stephanie and Dr. Harrison and I have been talking about on in terms of tracking this and sort of reporting out on it on a regular basis. We definitely, I mean, I think we can all acknowledge it's not only about academic rigor. We've got our what the those three things that we're going to talk about, I think consistently, right? Those evergreen goals of academic performance, but also sort of feeling like everybody's a part of that learning community and becoming future-ready learners. I believe that if we really value those things, then we'll measure them. And I think we may have to get a little bit creative when it comes to the other things about how do we measure their community involvement? How do we measure? You know, whether or not they're future-ready learners. But I think we we could apply a little bit of sort of elbow grease to that problem and come to each board meeting with here's how we're doing, here's, here's how we're doing at driving towards our academic goals, at driving towards our community-building goals and driving towards our, towards our future-ready goals. So I I hope that we'll be able to present some of that and sort of get feedback from the board and the community about how we do that, you know, in the very near future. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Pearson, you go? Okay. Thank you very much. That takes us to Mr. Zachary Clarence.
Good evening. Mr. Stinson, could you pull up the budget object summary, please? We'll start there.
Certainly.
I'll be brief, because I know we've got some other important things to talk about. So while Mr. Stinson's pulling it up, the year is progressing as we typically expect. I'll give you a forewarning. This report is will be your last Phoenix-generated report. We're, we've made the transition to E-Finance Plus. Technically effective January one, but actually January fourth is the first of your back. So this is the last Phoenix report. So this is the last Phoenix report you'll see. Uh, it may look a little wonky to folks because there's not a lot of encumbrances. We've been slowly removing those off. There's only, I think I might count five lines of encumbrance on them. That's a reflection of us making the transition over to E-Finance Plus. Uh, I think the first time you'll see everything sort of work, that will be, uh, our next report in February for January, because that will be, we'll have everything, uh, transitioned over. We're still in the process of getting those things, both, uh, POs and RECs and encumbrances transitioned over. Uh, so there's nothing too alarming here, uh, it's just, like I say, it will look a little wonky of all the zeros in the far right. Uh, but those things are just being worked off, working backwards. So the larger ones are the ones that are remaining or for December. Uh, like I said, those are being moved over into E-Finance Plus. The transition to E-Finance Plus is going relatively well. We hit a, uh, I won't call it snag, we made a discovery in the last week regarding our account structure, we have to make some adjustments, uh, for, for our needs and what our auditors need. So we're going to spend this upcoming weekend getting that squared away. We have a goal, we have it worked out by next Wednesday before our next, uh, payroll starts, so we'll take care of that. Like I said, there's not anything dramatic here, uh, to talk about, if anyone has any questions, I know you, you got this ahead of time, so. I'm, Mr. Parker had some questions, I hope I addressed those earlier today in my conversations with him, but if not, I'll fill those questions at this point.
Any questions for Clarence?
One thing for Clarence. Uh, it looks like if you take all the, all the dollars that are, that would normally be encumbered. And I, I understand we're switching systems and, and there, and, and therefore that, that wasn't an easy thing, uh, to do. That, uh, that'll, uh, that would take us to, uh, to an unexpendated fund balance of three hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-one. That is, that is unusually low, uh, for where we are, uh, this year, year over year. And I know we have some, some grant money that's going to be coming in, that's going to help to, help to pick that up a bit. But, um, do you see a, do you see a problem with us being able to get to the finish line?
I don't, because the thing about encumbrances, we, a lot of times you will encumber something and end up not using, so it gets released. So the, the fact that encumbrances doesn't give me much pause, I think, um, I feel comfortable where we are, I think we'll get, be able to finish the year. I think we'll get a better really assessment, I would say, the end of February, because then we sort of, you're on sort of a downward slope in that, where you can really assess where you're at right now. You're at the midway point in a COVID year, so sort of trying to predict the future and where those encumbrances fall out. I think maybe slightly premature, but I think we have a really better picture towards the end of February, where we stand, what encumbrances we can release and what expenditures are we going to have. So I, I, at this point, I am comfortable being able to.
And, and, um, I said there was only one, but I lied, there's actually two. The amount of money that is still in the budget for, for, for student transportation. Obviously, we're not going to use all of that because, um, we had, uh, a, a long time without, without, without our kids go, going to school. Is, is, is there a formula that's been established for the dollars that, uh, that, that, that we save in the budget, uh, for, for, for the non-use of buses?
There's no form as of yet, because we're still in negotiations with the bus company about what that number will be, because we have a contract, we have a contract and COVID wasn't contemplated in the contracts, we're happy, we're still negotiating about how we're gonna resolve that, so we haven't created a format because we don't know what the, the baseline number will be.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So Mr. Stinson, you would go up, there are no transfers for December, because like we said, we were trying to keep that to a minimum, since we're transferring, going to a new system. So there is no transfer report this month. Mr. Stinson, if you could go over to the, uh, health insurance report? Thank you very much. Um, the thing of note here on the health insurance, if you could scroll down, Mr. Stinson, to get to December, there you go. I wanted to point out to the board, uh, something I had to share with the Reading Board last week. If you look at the claims in December, we're over three hundred thousand, and that's noteworthy. Uh, I, was noteworthy for me because it happened in Reading in November, and I, as I told the Reading Board, it'd be curious thing to see if it happens again in December. We got our reports in on Monday, so we already get both, uh, December reports for all three districts done yesterday. So Reading is over three hundred thousand, both November and December. We're at the trailing, we're over the three hundred thousand for December. What makes this interesting? The only other times going back to two thousand and fifteen, we've exceeded three hundred thousand, has always been the beginning of the year, July, August, maybe September. Now, I, I think seeing that sort of pent-up surge of people who didn't get procedures done from last spring up to now, so you're seeing this, you know, surge, you went from one eighty-eight in November to three hundred eighteen in December, so we'll have to keep track of this, keep an eye on this. If that continues on and it has, if it has a run rate of two or three months, because that could sort of throw off, uh, our expectations, so I just bring that to your attention, that, uh, it's there, it happened in December. Uh, I'm taking, keep a close eye on it, because I say in Reading, it happened in November and December. But in Easton, it's now happened in December, and the concern will be what January shows us. If we see that continuing trend, then we'll need to have a discussion. Now, I, I think I shared with the chairman and the, and the three chairs that we're trying to bring in our, uh, healthcare consultants into the joint meeting on the twenty-six to talk about the projections for next year. So instead of it having come three different times, we haven't come once, talk of all three, uh, districts. So we maybe to get, delve a deeper, uh, questions on, uh, this sort of trend line on the twenty-six. Beyond that, there's not, uh, not much there, this report speaks for itself, but I just wanted to bring your attention to that claim history and, and, and December of the three hundred and eighteen thousand, as you can see. I think the last time we broached three hundred thousand was back in August of, uh, two thousand and eighteen. So it's been, it's been some time, uh, and then like I said, all, all the other times we've done that, it's been July, August, September. We've never really had that high of a number in December. I'll go up to any questions, if anyone has any.
Any questions, uh, from the board for Clarence? Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Stinson, I'll turn it back over to the, my colleagues.
Thank you very much, Clarence. Uh, let's, uh, I think that brings us to Jen.
I know that we have a very full agenda, so I'm going to keep mine exceptionally brief. Um, I think that, um, it's really the time of year where we start talking about transitions. You know, we have fifth graders that are moving up to grade six, and then we have eighth graders that would be moving on to job bala. So this is really the time where we start, um, talking about those transitions and what supports will look like for the next grade. So really, that's really where our focus and our head has been in special services, in setting up those meetings to make sure that the smooth passing of the baton from, uh, one building to the next. And then, um, the only thing I, the other thing I wanted to mention was, um, I just want to talk briefly about preschool. This is also the time where we do the preschool lottery. You know, as you know, um, we have an amazing preschool program, and I always call it the gem of Easton, because it is, um, it is a nice way to get, uh, little babies into staples. So, uh, we will be doing our preschool lottery, um, probably in later this month. So that we hopefully will be able to, um, welcome our youngest learners, um, for the upcoming school year. Are there any questions for me?
No questions for Jen, all right. Thank you very much, Jen. That will take us to Mrs. Fox-Santora.
Um, I wanted to share that, um, we welcomed eight new students since last we met. Um, and on January twentieth next week, we're going to welcome another student. As a result of the announcement of us moving from hybrid into all-in, we had, um, a number of families that decided to go all-in, who at one time were in temporary learning from home. We have one classroom, if you look at the, um, class size and you look across grade four, for the very first time, we have a class size of twenty-three. And we are thrilled to have all twenty-three kids come. But we are unable to meet the minimum distance of three feet between student desks in that one classroom, twenty-three is too many. So tomorrow, we're going to relocate that one grade-four classroom into the art room in the fifth-grade neighborhood that we're not using because the art teacher moved downstairs to that art room. But in doing that, we, the kids will have multiple sinks to use. We can bring in, um, portable cubbies that we have in storage for the kids' belongings. But most importantly, the kids can be appropriately distanced, um, from one another. Um, and we did send a letter home to the parents to let them know that we're going to relocate them for, uh, January twentieth. I also wanted to share that, um, in our, in the November Ordeved report, I had indicated the number of kids that were in, um, temporary learning from home, all-out, and those that were in hybrid. On November tenth, we had fifty-eight students who were temporary learning from home and eleven in hybrid. Between November tenth and the time that Dr. Harrison made the decision for us to go all-out, there were a couple of, well, there was a handful of families that made the decision to go all-out on their own. They were uncomfortable with the numbers. Oh, Jendel Conti's picture is blinking.
I'm on it.
Sorry, that distracted me, um, so knowing that, as of today, and technically, we're, we're in hybrid today. We have sixty-eight. So we went from fifty-eight to sixty-eight temporary learning from home. But it's not an, it's not a apples-to-apples comparison, because some of those numbers are different. We have three kids who are in quarantine and one in isolation. But I sent a letter home to the families, um, asking them to make a commitment, since hybrid is no longer a choice, to inform me by January thirteenth, which is tomorrow. What is their decision? Are they going to continue with temporary learning from home? More importantly, those eleven kids in hybrid, what were their decisions? The ninety-nine percent of the families who elected for temporary learning from home have made the decision to continue temporary learning from home. But not all eleven families have returned my, have come, have gotten back to me with regard to their decision. So it will be between sixty-seven and seventy-one. So we went from fifty-eight on November tenth. I told you, some made the decision, but as of January twentieth, it's going to be anywhere between sixty-seven and seventy-one. Once I hear back from everybody tomorrow. We'll be fully out, and the rest of the kids will be all-in. And the last thing I wanted to share is that, um, at the end of the calendar year, we had a math paraprofessional, um, who resigned her position and relocated out of state. So we are now looking for a part-time math paraprofessional position. And as always, we're looking for recess supervisors and cafeteria supervisors and substitute teachers. That is everything. Any questions for me?
Kim, I was just wondering how the, uh, fully-out kids break out by grade? Did I, did I miss that on the report?
Oh, you know what, left it as DL, didn't we? I didn't do that, Jenny, and I will do it for, um, next month, or if you'd rather, I can send it to you during the day tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think anytime it just, for me, it's a conversation about when are we, are we going to talk about having faculty or staff or any kind of situation that's, um, totally dedicated to the remote students? I just, I continue to be concerned about the, what it's doing to the instruction for everyone. You know, best interest of the kids at home, best interest of kids at school, to have our faculty constantly with, you know, one hand, um, in each, each mode and each model.
Since I, uh, gave the parents the option to tell me by January thirteenth, maybe I'll give it to you by the end of the week. So that we'll know a firm answer from those parents, and I'll, uh, break it out for you guys, and I'll send it to the entire board.
Thank you.
Very good, I think that takes us to Sue.
Hi, good evening, everybody. It, it was wonderful seeing students come back in the building on Monday. The teachers were excited, the students were excited. Um, I was in a classroom today doing an, an informal observation. And the teacher is a way to welcome the students in and also take attendance, asked, so what's making you happy today? It was a beautiful day, it was sunny, uh, the weather was nice, and it was so nice to hear the quick responses from the students who were just saying, because I'm here in class with you. Um, and it, it was really a heartwarming, um, opportunity to see how happy everybody was to be back in. Um, enrollment-wise, we have, year-to-date, um, brought in twenty-seven new, uh, students to our school. Uh, the board report that I submitted in paper is actually at a date. We have three students who joined us since that day, which was just last week. So, um, we continue to grow, we're, uh, currently at three hundred and twenty-three students. And, uh, next I'd like to talk about, uh, uh, the same type of thing that Kim just reported on, which is the number of families who have decided to stay in full remote. Um, but before I do that, I just want to thank the parents, um, who are listening, who hear this, um, for contacting the school, sharing information about whether or not they've been out of town and they, they're keeping their children home because they're finishing up a quarantine. Um, it, it's really been very, very helpful and gives us a lot of, um, good feeling that, um, you know, the school is safe. So thank you, parents, for reporting what you know about your children and their exposures and the travel that you've done. It's been very, very helpful. Um, as of yesterday, we had, uh, well, back in November, we had twenty-two students who were, whose parents selected to do temporary learning from home. And now we are up to forty-eight students who are doing that. So it was twenty-two, it's up to forty-eight, it's pretty much distributed across all three grades. And, um, and that represents fifteen percent of the school. We'll, we'll do temporary, it does change, uh, it changed again today. A student came in on Monday and we heard, uh, today that the family's switching to full remote. So the numbers will keep changing, but it, it did have a significant increase. And finally, I'd like to just thank, um, our academic mentor, Tim Sather, along with Annie Moore. Um, last week, we had a parent presentation, we had over thirty-five parents attend. It was called Pandemic Parenting Survival Guide. The presentation has been posted on to our main page of our website. Um, it was a packed, full, little bit over an hour presentation that was, um, very well-received. We received a bunch of emails, so thanks, and I'm just grateful that parents came out for it. And those of you who missed it, please check it out on the website. And, um, any questions?
Any questions for Sue? All right. Thank you very much, um, that, uh, brings us to, um, board committee reports. So I think we can start with the, um, curriculum committee. Gretchen, did you, you, uh, you have anything? Thank you.
Sure, hello, everybody. So, um, our current math textbook that is used K to five in Easton and Reading, it's called Math in Focus, and it will not be available in its current version, um, come the end of this year. So, and it's also the last year of our six-year contract, uh, contract. So, um, the math specialists looked at available resources, and they reviewed twelve resources. Then, a group of math specialists, teacher representatives and administrators narrowed it from the, uh, those twelve resources to three, and then the three vendors were, um, interviewed extensively. Today, the committee heard a summary of the criteria for and outcomes of the selection process for the new math program material that was recommended. The name of that material is called InVision, and it's actually a platform. So what they recommended is that we're buying a, a platform, means, meaning that it's a digital subscription with printable consumables. Um, and just a few highlights, they felt that, um, it was more, a more comprehensive. Um, and just a few highlights, they felt that um it was more com- a more comprehensive program. Um, the particular Envision platform than the other ones that they had seen. Um, it had amazing embedded technology, the STEM extensions, uh, extensions for our ELL learners and um extensions for projects, enrichment and intervention um were all things that they felt would be um welcome for our c- uh, community of learners. So with that being said, our committee today um approved the motion to recommend that the Eastern Board of Ed adopt the new K to five math resource called Envision. That is what I have to report.
Thank you, Gretchen. Any questions for Gretchen? Yes, Jeff?
One, John. Uh, Gretchen, uh, in the meeting earlier, uh, the, the cost of the, of the platform wasn't, wasn't uh discussed. Is, is this being spread out over the uh, uh, over the life of the program or is this a, is this a one-time upfront cost for us?
Um, so, so Jeff, I think the, the contract, we actually have a couple of, of um sort of options and I don't think that we've locked that down. I think we can probably get into it uh in more detail in the discussion and possible action. But um just roughly speaking, I think the plan is to, to spread it out over at least two years and possibly three.
Okay.
Can I just add one, one quick thing? So Gretchen was describing the platform with printable resources. I don't want anyone on the board or in the community to believe that the expectation would be that parents would need to print a resource. So it's a consumable. Um, but you know, quite similar to the student workbooks that, that we are currently using, but that consumable includes a more detailed uh description, uh breakdown of, of concept, breakdown of the activity that would be a resource to parents that would um typically be found in, in sort of the traditional hardcover textbook. But for this program, it's part of the printed resource.
And, and Stephanie, I think you, you recently characterized it as, as sort of having that integration point. So instead of what may have happened in the past where a student is home with a, with a worksheet, a sort of some of those consumables and um struggling and the parent goes, here, let me help you. Wait, I don't see how you're supposed to do that. I, I don't, I don't know if anyone else has had that experience, but I certainly have. Th- this would help to alleviate that because it, it's sort of the integrated instruction of how they're, how they're encountering in the classroom is right there in the worksheet.
That's certainly our hope, that, that there's just a much more detailed description and then a large workspace for the students to um uh, to think through the problem to solve with the appropriate supports for parents. As opposed to some of you might have had experiences where a teacher would say, well, I don't always send home the textbook because we don't want to load up kids' backpacks, but if, if that would be helpful to your family, I'll send home the textbook. Uh, maybe sometimes even loaning them out for longer periods of time. Uh, this way, it's, it's right there in, in one resource.
Great, thank you. Any additional questions for Gretchen? Uh, yes, Randy?
John, um, either Gretchen or Stephanie, I don't know. I mean, I'm a little bit disappointed that uh math book is went out of focus in six years. So um is that your normal expectation for this going forward?
Um, uh, six years is, is a, a longer subscription, honestly. Uh, we lost the online access at the end of last year and the workbooks were ordered for this year, but this is the last year that they will be printed. I will say that the math specialist that led the uh review of other materials found that all of the other materials offered superior tech integration um than what we currently have. And not just tech integration in terms of the, the daily student work, but also integrated assessments, assessments that can be edited by the teacher, alignment to standards, down to uh item analysis on assessments, also aligned with a depth of knowledge or critical thinking level. So while I never welcome a really large transition that's going to require a, a fair amount of professional work during a time when we know that, that uh teachers' plates are full and, and certainly families have a lot going on. I don't anticipate this uh transition to be as disruptive as the one we experienced when we moved from growing with math to a homegrown program for a year to Math in Focus, which all coincided with Connecticut's adoption of, with the Common Core standards. So that was in a very large adjustment in terms of a standards change and also a, a resource change. This resource change, I think, will represent progress on many levels.
Okay, I, and I appreciate all that. How long do you expect this to be our standard or, or our math?
Yeah, it, so that the um, the vendor has offered us a number of different uh subscription lengths. We're, we're looking most closely at um three years, three years, five years. Obviously, if we purchase it just for one year, the, the cost is much higher. And that would not, honestly, from a, from a curriculum leadership and professional development point of view, I would never recommend that we implement a program for just one year. It really honestly takes an entire year to really get uh onboard with just becoming familiar with the program. So I would say that three years would, is probably a, a, a good minimum.
Okay, and at that point, you, you evaluate switching or staying with it or renewing or whatever. Um, neighboring towns, we're always comparing ourselves to the, looking over the fence to the neighbors. Other folks use this in the area?
It's not, it's not widely used in the area differently than when we made our last change and it felt as if the entire um Fairfield County area and Derg was, was sort of a swept away with Math in Focus. That's not the case currently. Um, know that different districts have different um lengths of time for their, for their review cycles. And so I don't know the length of the contract that other districts signed. There is a district nearby that is um, will be piloting this same product, will be piloting Envision next year. Other districts um have mainly stayed with their current resource, but probably purchased the um updated edition one year ago, two years ago, et cetera.
And that
But I guess that's a long way of explaining, they are most likely not using the two thousand um twelve version of the product.
So there was an option to just stay with Math in Focus and buy the twenty-twenty-one version or?
The new, we could have bought the new version and we reviewed their materials along with, along with many others. So the, the first review included a review of eleven different products. And it did not rise to the top either within the um ed report study or within our own internal review.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, um, quick update on the policy committee. So um, I, I think I've given the, the update that, hey, we're still working. Uh, we meet uh every Friday, um, almost every Friday. Um, we generally spend about an hour and try to work our way through the, the sort of all the policies to bring back um a recommendation to our respective boards um uh about the, the adoption. We um are through the three thousand series. Um, what we uncovered in the three thousand series were a number of items related to transportation, food service. And instead of making recommendations on those, we felt it would be wise for us to engage with the Food Services Committee, the Transportation Committee. So you'll, you'll start to see um, for those who are on those committees, you'll start to see uh sort of Policy Committee reaching out and looking for recommendations. Um, we've had fantastic partnership from Stephanie and from Rydell and, you know, Clarence joins and we've had great participation from Central Office um when we've needed the expertise. Um, one area in particular that's come up most recently and um, you know, obviously because of the, um, you know, where we're at, all of these are being recorded. Um, so you can go back and, and look at these um videos is we, we've been talking about uh, the last two weeks, we've been talking about some privacy concerns. Um, in the three thousand series, there's some, there are a number of items about student privacy and um the expectations of privacy amongst our employees. Um, we got into a discussion about Go Guardian and was able to get a demo of Go Guardian um in our last meeting on Friday, um, which didn't necessarily resolve all of our concerns, but we, we, we see clearly now sort of what it's for and sort of the appropriate use of it. And we want to make, we, we want to create greater transparency amongst the community um and sort of certainly the board of what it is and what it's for and how it's being used and, and sort of the um protections that are in place and all of that. Um, so we should see at the tri-board meeting on the twenty-sixth um, a um, a slightly more detailed sort of review of that. So I just want to give people a heads up that's uh on the way. Good. Any questions on Policy Committee? Okay, very good. That takes us to discussion of possible action. Item number uh A, item number A. Yes, I said that. Um, you're welcome. Uh, K through five math textbook recommendation. That looks familiar. Stephanie, do you, uh, did you want to tee this up?
Uh, yes, the uh Easton and Reading Curriculum Board of Ed Curriculum Committees have discussed um over the course of this year, the criteria that are used to evaluate new textbook resources and um have spent considerable time discussing different options for our elementary math core resource. And on the basis of a very extensive review um that began actually last year internally led by our math specialists, uh, we whittled from eleven to nine to six to three and ultimately um honed in on the single Envision math resource that is the, the recommended elementary resource for the next few years.
Thank you. And um specific action uh that, that we'd be looking for tonight, Stephanie, is there, um, do we need to vote on anything tonight?
Uh, no. So at this meeting, um, by statute, the, the board needs to provide public notice that um you intend to take action to adopt the new math textbook. So you're providing notice to the community as a board this evening and we'll take action at a later date.
Very good. So consider
Certainly, again, the, the um, the minutes and videos of those meetings are all available on the district website.
Excellent. Thank you. Any, any questions or anyone? How many uh comments?
I'm sorry, did I miss this? Are, are we, did we talk about the cost yet or no? We don't have the cost yet.
So um, Stephanie, would, I mean, does it make sense? I, I don't know if, in terms of the contract negotiations, if there's anything specifically, so.
We have not advanced to, to contract negotiations. I have some, some figures that have been discussed internally, but not in public meetings at this point. We have a placeholder in the budget, um, which I can tell you is much higher than, than the number that we are narrowing in on.
So we had reserved based on sort of previous contracts with the different um setup?
We have in the proposed budget. We do have a plug number in the proposed budget, so it won't be the additional once we resolve it.
Okay, and we expect that to come in lower than what we had set aside and lower than we had, we had paid in the past?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Um, uh, also, Randy, would it be interesting to sort of talk about the, sort of the terms or the, like, I mean, I'm sorry, the, the duration? So three-year versus five-year?
I think so. I, I, and I guess I, I didn't ask this, this question that I'm just curious about Reading. Are, I mean, are we in lockstep here, going up to the high school together with the same protocols and?
Correct. We share the same curriculum.
Okay. Right, and it was a uh a joint meeting the last time we got together to talk about this. Yeah.
Sure. I mean, three years, five years are, you know, sort of advantages, disadvantages to each.
Yeah, and, and so Randy, I, I, um, I think we, the prevailing wisdom was, you know, somewhere between three and five years made sense. Um, I did raise the issue of because we're not really talking anymore about, it's just about the textbook. We're talking about there are print materials that will be given to each student. That's the sort of the workbooks. Plus, there's a sort of online platform that has assessments built into it that has, you know, there's parent videos in there. There's like, it's a whole ecosystem. My experience with that is you, you have a textbook company creating a sort of an online ecosystem. Uh, they're not necessarily going to be um as good as it, as, as a company who is dedicated to technology who has, so I'm not saying this is gonna, gonna happen, but we may find better platforms three years from now, five years from now. So we should just be mindful of that as we're thinking about the duration of the contract. That, and especially right now, the amount of innovation that I expect to see in education in the next few years, I think is going to be immense. You know, sort of people responding to some of the pain points that we've acutely felt. So that, that's been my perspective, but definitely I think it's, it's an open issue right now.
As an, as an annually funded um budget item, are, are we allowed termination for convenience from a funding standpoint?
It's been a part of the conversations in terms of the, where we, what we might want to include in the contract and there's, you know, obviously the, the companies are always trying to protect their interests on that um as we are. So I, I think we, we may not have a huge amount of flexibility there, but I don't, I don't know if Clarence can talk about.
Randy, we, we were proposing a structure that addresses the, what I call the budget, budget contingent aspect of, you know, we didn't mean to back off. We don't have budget pool. But they have risk. They don't want to be uh arranged like a five-year thing and not have the uh money available. So we're, we're trying to take a sort of a hybrid approach in our negotiations. We, we propose the hybrid structure, which Stephanie is taking back to the company. We're continuing dialogue. So that is something definitely on the table.
Okay, so in theory, their, part of the contract is amortized over five years and some of their, their expenses and our expenses are annual because of workbooks and what have you. So there would be some, if we, if we signed up for five and we only went three, there'd be some sunk costs that they would have to eat or charges back or whatever. So, okay.
It's, it's a little bit different than that. It's, it's a different structure than what we currently have. So with our current program, in the first year, the, the cost was much greater because we're purchasing the um the textbooks themselves, right? You're purchasing the, the non-consumable materials as well as all of the initial professional development. Um, with this program, while you might use it, say, for three years or five years or six years, the cost structure um is, is only spread over, say, um, two years. And then the subscription is for, is, is based on a certain enrollment. And then if that enrollment changes, there is, there can be give and take as long as you're within the total, right? So it's, you're, you're not every, you, the, the district would not be purchasing the workbooks as a separate resource every single year that they are using the product. So it's a, it's a little bit of a, it's a slightly different structure than what we've had in years past.
Okay, okay. So I'm sorry, what do we need to decide tonight? Just that we're advancing the, the, the ball, so to speak?
Giving, giving notice that we're, we're doing what we're doing, which I, I think we've satisfied. Whatever that is, we, we are giving notice that we are considering this new textbook.
Okay. So do we need a motion to that effect or?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Good. Okay, um, that takes us to uh approval, uh, item, uh, item B. Uh, the approval of change in authorized signer for ED dash zero nine nine Agreement for Child Nutrition Program to Clarence Zachary. Do I hear a motion?
They're moved.
Thank you, Randy. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? Very good. Call the question, all in favor? I see Randy, Jeff, I see Jenny, I see Gretchen, and I see Devin and myself. That is six to zero. The motion passes. Very good. Thank you. And that takes us to item C, uh, Budget Presentation Projects and Programs. Uh, I think I'm turning it over to, oh, Dr. Harrison, who is ready. Very good.
All right. Good evening again, everyone. I'm happy to have this opportunity to. To discuss our recommended budget for 2122. So just as a reminder, this budget process, we sort of laid this out in previous meetings in December, we talked about contracts and healthcare. Tonight's meeting will focus on positions and programs and specifically looking at our. Goals for 2122, some strategic goals over a three year period, professional learning, curriculum development. Enrollment projections, and then we'll talk a bit about special education. Just as a reminder, this is part of. Sort of the, the high level view of, of piecing together all, all of these sort of. Broader aspects of the budget and then having a full conver conversation about the full budget when we get to February. Our next budget workshop after tonight is on January. I'm sorry that your faces are right.
Twenty first. Twenty first.
Thank you. January 21st. And before then you will get your very famous binder or a version of that so that you can have. All of your materials that you could dig down to the, to a much more detailed view. Because we'll stay high level tonight and I'll give you opportunities to ask any clarifying questions as we go. This year is a little bit different, given that we are not having our typical in-person meetings. And so you will have the option of having. A paper copy of that, that, that budget workbook or a. Soft copy, hard copy or soft copy. And so I, I think the easiest way board members that we, we could. Could have proceeded with that if you'll, maybe it's important after the meeting, just indicate with the chair that. What, what your preference would be. So just a snapshot of, of our, of our schools. So obviously two schools in our district. So looking at Samuel Staples and Helen Keller. We have 555 students currently at Staples, 321 students at Keller. And I just realized that, that both of the staff numbers are wrong. So this is part of the challenge of trying to remember which district you're, you're presenting the budget with. So I apologize for that. I'll update those numbers before we make this a public and charitable document. One of the things that I listed there just was the accountability index, which is. Just an overall picture of a number of assessment items, looking at. The, the performance on smarter balance assessments, also student performance on next generation standards. PE performance, attendance, just a number of metrics. And it, this gives us just sort of an overall picture. Of, of where each of the schools are on a number of accountability areas. We'll say that, that what we see here individually at 80.5, 82.2. And then that combined number is, as you can imagine, puts us way at the top part of, in comparison to other districts across the state. Of course, once we kind of dig deeper and. You know, throughout the year revisit our, our, our assessment data, particularly when we get back into the cycle of looking at. Our end of the year assessment data in comparisons, you know, these numbers will, we'll be able to lift out some of those pieces and talk a little bit more in depth. But I think just from a snapshot view of where we are and who we are, I think that those numbers are just helpful to think about. So there, the theory of action that I always think is really important. To begin a budget with, just gives a peek into sort of what our thinking is, central office as we're developing this and. If we employ responsible financial practices to develop transparent budgets. Then we will gain and increase the support of taxpayers to continue to offer valuable learning experiences and programs to our students. And I think that this is. Particularly for me as, as. With this being my first time presenting superintendent's recommended budget to our community, that I really do want to, to, to show this as a transparent process. That naturally keeps our students very much at the center of, of, of connecting where we want to go with them to our resource allocation. So just as a reminder, we connect all of this back to those ABC goals, our mission and enduring goals and aspirations. And the mission of ER nine is to educate and nurture our students as they grow into self-directed. Knowledgeful, critical thinkers and compassionate, engaging community members. I think that as we've talked throughout this meeting from right at the start to now, you can see how. That, that all of the things that we're working towards with our students is really focused on the overall mission. And then it's important to connect our resource allocation to that as well and our budget and planning. And then hopefully these are becoming very easy to remember. Because they really are guiding our work, this focus on academic excellence, building a caring community and cultivating future ready learners. And so we'll keep connecting back to those pieces tonight as we're talking about our programs. Just want to, as a reminder, in November, our administrators presented their annual goals. And so at Staples, their goal for this current school year, our students will explore the theme of diversity and engage in discussions. And tasks that broaden their understanding and respect for people who come from different races, socioeconomic backgrounds. Follow different religious traditions, speak different languages and see all individuals as unique and valuable. As a result of this work, our students will demonstrate empathy by intentionally seeking to understand another's perspective. Or points of view and respecting each person's differences. While these are annual goals, I think that, that. When school leaders develop really smart goals, they last beyond one. One school year. And so we'll, we'll continue to build upon that at Staples as we move forward into the. 2021, 2022 school year. And then at Helen Keller during this upcoming, during this current school year, we will focus on three key areas. Looking at student engagement, technological skill and development and social emotional learning. Support of all learners and colleagues. As a community of educators, we have embarked on a journey to help students during a time of a global pandemic. And to transition from surviving to thriving, I love that term, that phrase, we will target our work this school year on developing. The technological and instructional skills needed to engage learners, promote personal growth and support. The emotional wellbeing of all school community members. And hopefully woven into that, you can see the influence of those. ABC enduring goals and aspirations really flowing right through these school goals and priorities. That will again take us right into next year. So I want to start with, with building on this. The, the work that we've done so far this year with a real clear focus on technology that makes sense because we are. Are learning in a global pandemic. And, you know, I've been talking about. There, there are some silver linings to what we're experiencing this year. And one of those is that. I think across our state and then definitely nationally, our focus on digital learning and our capacity work with our students. Has accelerated immensely. I think that outside of this, trying to engage students remotely during a global pandemic. It would have taken us 10 years to make the progress that we've made with digital learning and, and building capacity with our students. And our staff, if we not, would not have had this time. So this is a really good opportunity for us to. Really think about our tried district technology goals. And so I'm going to. Hand over to Dr. Pearson Ugle, who's been working with our, our technology advisory committee of, of staff across all three districts. In really laying this out and thinking about how this will support our work related to technology and. Digital learning integration over the next several years. Stephanie?
Thank you. The ER nine Technology Advisory Committee met very recently to talk about this very topic. And we felt that it was especially important now. And before we advance budget proposals to discuss the long-term. Goals of any work that involves technology. So while we might hear conversations about a particular product. That is essential or one-to-one, are we going one-to-one? All of these ideas need to be framed within larger goals. And so as a group, we really talked about staying true. To our ABC enduring goals, but also what we know about learning, which is that. It doesn't end at the end of a lesson or at the end of the year, or even when the students graduate from Joel Barlow. But that we want to be sure that we're thinking about the application of understanding in real life. And, and when we, we talk about authentic learning, we mean just that. So what is the transfer of understanding that? Allows our students to be successful in the world outside of the, whether it's the, the bounds that are, that are. More invisible by remote learning or the actual school walls. And so when we talk about authentic learning, we're, we're speaking of just that. What is the authentic learning that it could occur as a result of achieving long-term goals in the area of technology? So we went to the standards and in this case, these are the ISTI standards. This is the International Society for Technology Education. And ISTI recently revised their standards and they have them. Categorized into different, different groups, students, teachers, coaches and educational leaders. And we focused first on our students. Where are we as a three district group? In, in these areas in terms of global collaboration, empowerment of our learners, the construction of knowledge. Innovative design, digital citizen computational thinker and, and creative communicator. And we talked about, well, we're doing work in some of these areas, but it's work that needs to be advanced with a clearer sense of. What we're trying to achieve. And so much of our work. Really relies on individual teachers. Doing thoughtful, productive, creative things with our students. But not necessarily being guided by a leadership structure that is systemic. Or even at the school level in some cases. So we know that we value our library media specialists. And our library media specialist in some ways really support the integration of technology and work collaboratively with our teachers. In Easton, we have a library media specialist just at Samuel Staples. We know we currently do not have a library media specialist at the middle school. Moving beyond that, the students move to Joel Barlow High School, which I recognize is an entirely different district. But they are also currently without a library media specialist and they have a slightly different structure in a position of technology leadership. So when we have these discussions and we include participants across all three districts, systemically. There are some missing pieces here. And in order to advance. A thoughtful, systemic, strategic plan with the respect to the integration of technology. To advance student learning, really to help students apply. Not just what they've learned, but to apply to real life problems outside of our school walls, then. We feel strongly that we need to enhance the leadership in this area.
So they spent some time talking about, so what are the things that we need to do to achieve these goals? We've connected these action steps back to those are our three aspirational goals around academic excellence. Building care, a caring community and future ready learners. And then looking at that across four distinct areas. So looking at human capital, tech, technology, hardware, technology, software, training and PD. And this really fits nicely in the structure that we have for, for our, our budget process here in Easton where we're sort of digging in and looking at the. Recommended programs and how that connects back to those, those bigger goals. But then what also, what are the budget implications for that? So I'll have Stephanie go through these four areas related to those three goals. And then we'll sort of talk back and I'll make the connections back to the budget.
Yes. And in fairness to the work of the group, this is, this is really in draft form. So we are continuing to, to. Build this, this comprehensive multi-year plan. But when we think about human capital, we're thinking about what are the, the human resources? That we need to advance our work and the positions that come to mind. At the highest level would include the director of digital learning and technology. And then the concept of a, a technology integrator in coach at each school building. And the importance of maintaining library and media specialists in all of the schools. When we think about hardware, we know that it's not, of course, it's not just about the hardware, but the hardware is necessary. And so if we want to. Reach that tipping point of how technology is integrated, we want to be able to consider what it, what would be required? To be a one-to-one teaching and learning environment and perhaps not for every single grade, but as a, as a system. As a school district. What to, what would we need in terms of, of hardware, in terms of policies, in terms of, of support for parents, support for students? Agreements to advance that idea. And then the next category is the technology and software. And it actually honestly ties back to human capital because so much of. The integration of. Software has to do with being able to. Provide leadership in time for teachers or teacher leaders to research the best tools. Connect them to what we are currently doing and then provide the professional development or the training to their colleagues. In order to implement new software tools. And so that it is this, it is the software, but it's also connected to the human capital. And then finally, the time, the time both to do training and the training is, is generally a very discreet set of skills that can be mastered in order to. Use a particular product and then real professional learning, which is, which is based more on the SAMR model and, and. Many of you have heard us talk about the SAMR model before. This is the, the continuum of the way technology is, is used from substitution. I'm going to substitute a whiteboard or an interactive whiteboard for a chalkboard. All the way to redefinition. How am I redefining the learning experience using technology in a way that would not be possible without it? So an example is I've created a learning community in my classroom and we are actively. Collaborating with, with a school community that's across the world. And we are including mentors who are experts in a particular. Content area and they are a part of our learning process that would not be possible without the use of technology. That the students are creating the products that show their learning and they are the creators. So rather than the teacher saying, here's this assignment and every student's going to create. Say a five paragraph essay, the students determine based on the audience, this is the right form for my product. And these are the people that I've identified that are going to collaborate with me in order to reach that goal. So that's, that's sort of a. On the spot example of, of the SAMR model. And then finally, and we don't, we don't want to forget that the importance of data analysis. So the way that we. Collect data across all schools in a way that allows us access, allows us the ability to analyze. And then would also inform purposeful. Directed. Learning activities for our students really directed at their individual needs. And so the data analysis is certainly a part of the technology goal work. When we get into building a caring community, we're thinking about. How do we define community? And is it, is it just by the bounds? And is it, is it just by the bounds of our classroom, or is it much broader than that? And we were talking as a group about the opportunities that are, are possible through technology to support students that might not feel as if they have a group with which to associate in our, in our small towns, in our small districts, and how that could also support our DEI work, that through thoughtful use of technology, it does allow kids to feel connected to others. We've heard from our graduates before that they didn't realize what a small town they lived in until they left it, right? So in some ways, we, we want to be so nurturing and supportive, and there's so many wonderful things about being in a small town, but it is also an opportunity to explore the world safely by connecting through, through the teaching and learning environment. And so the access to the internet using technology, obviously, we have to provide the access or nothing is possible, and the possibility is with, with collaboration. And then, and then finally, the importance of digital citizenship, because anytime we, we want our students to explore on the internet, we want to be sure that we have an expectation of, what they need to learn in order to be good digital citizens. And in our conversation, we thought that we need to do more to be sure that there are assured experiences along the way that continue to grow as the students move through the years, both in Easton, but then also moving into the, the high school years as well. And then finally, the, the future ready piece. So the, the future ready seems so obvious with technology. It was absolutely the last group that we, that we tackled, but the importance of making sure that, that students are, are ready for the unknowns of what the future will, will hold, right? So it's no longer talking about 21st century learning. We're talking about today's learning environment, but being ready for whatever the future might hold. So whether we're talking about how we're supporting the IT support, but also the, the connections with helping students plan for their future experiences. So at the high school, of course, they're thinking about college or, or post-high school experiences, and career exploration, and then how we're helping students to manage the world. So you can see the executive functioning example here, but what we talked about is that, you know, not very long ago, the, the belief was, well, if you just teach students how to use a calendar, or how to use a planner, then they're going to be well-equipped to organize their, their life. But how about teaching the students how to use an array of tools and having the student identify what tool would work best, so that the, the readiness of moving forward to the future also includes a very student-centered approach. The student owns the decision. I, I am going to use this particular tool that's baked into my phone, or I'm going to use the traditional planner, or I'm going to use something else. But we talked about executive functioning and how especially important that is in a world that's so highly distracted. And that is our, our work so far. As a tri-district committee, we, we recognize that there is more work ahead, but we thought that, given the timing with the budget, it was most important to, to share this with you this evening.
And so then, as we're thinking about how that connects then back to the budget, under human capital, you saw that we referenced a Director of Digital Learning and Technology. And so we really envisioned this position, and, and with a salary of around $160,000, we've been just sort of looking at what that looks like in, in neighboring districts to make sure that we, we would be competitive. Of course, that's a placeholder now as we're just kind of developing the, our budget, our recommended budget for next year. But the role of that person would really kind of focus in, in some broad areas. So that, that professional learning and coaching support, that there'd be a really clear pipeline with this person as a shared between all three districts as, and, and directly connected in central office with, with our curriculum work with Dr. Pearson Yugal, to really do, to support our in-building coaches, whether that is the stick, the stick in reading, the science, technology,
Instructional.
Instructional coach, thank you. Or, or whether that's working with, with our, our media specialist in Easton, if we don't have that position in year one. But really, so there's this piece of real focus on professional learning and coaching, and then also the support of that technology integration and personalized learning. And again, there you see sort of broken out the, the SAMR model that Stephanie referenced just a minute ago. And all of this is connecting to those ISTI standards that we have for our students, our leaders, and our educators, really guiding that, that broad work and helping us to piece all of those things together. What we imagine as additional budget implications is the restoration of the Helen Keller Library and Media Specialist in year one of this process. As, as a person in the building, our, our Director of Digital Learning and Technology naturally would work really closely with, with both of our media specialists, and in, in really supporting and developing a broader vision, and connecting that vision across all three of, of, all three levels and all five schools as well. And so that, that salary is, we are estimating $72,316. Then the, the other piece that we wanted to talk about tonight, based on our budget development process, was really looking at professional development and curriculum development. And so you see I use the, the mascots from both of the schools to just, you know, just show where these things are focusing. So we've already spent some time tonight talking about our K5 new math program. And, and then there's related professional learning that, that will come along with that. We'll, we'll, we'll get into the details of what that cost will be in, when we get sort of to the next level at our next budget workshop, and be able to dig into all of these line items. But really, that is, it's just really focusing that, that learning and supporting our teachers, and building that professional learning into the cost of the new program. Recognizing that we are making that shift at K5, we also want to, to build capacity at the 6-8 level, and making some, some updates and some changes over the summer with our math curriculum development, and that, that, that team working closely with Stephanie to, and, and our math specialists to make revisions to our current curriculum, and thinking about towards the future where we're headed. So there's that seamless approach from K5 to middle school, straight-type school, and there's closer coherence across all three districts and all three levels, and then also continuing to build our teacher capacity. We all know that, that K12, and especially K8 in, in Easton, that there's our focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so with the, the summer curriculum development and professional learning that we would typically do, our proposal would be to focus some of that work, particularly starting with humanities, with our teachers through some summer planning, to, to really address our humanities curriculum, and, and apply the diversity, equity, and inclusion lens to curriculum development. And then also for next year, setting aside some professional learning or professional development dollars to bring in some consultants to work with our staff. We're going to be doing some professional learning this year with, with our K8 staff around diversity, equity, and inclusion. As a, as a board, you were able to, to get a pretty sweet deal on some built-in professional learning. And so I'm excited to lead some of that work with our teachers for this current school year. And I like to think that I'm pretty good at it, but I'm also free, which is great. And then next year, going into our planning for next year, we're excited about bringing in some, some additional support to continue building on that work with our teachers, and then connecting that to the work of our diversity, equity, and inclusion task force overall. And then there you see, just kind of gone back to that digital learning and technology, really focusing that professional learning throughout the year, through the work of our Director of Digital Learning and Technology, and then those school-based positions as well, with the focus on those ISTI standards at all three levels. So before we get into enrollment projections, I just want to take a pause and take a moment and see if there are any clarifying questions that any board members might have about things that we've shared so far.
Any questions about anything that, that we've touched on from the board? Okay.
So our enrollment projections come from the reports that we, the report that we got from Prada, our Prada report. And so you'll see there are projected enrollment by, for each grade level. I put a star next to kindergarten. We, Prada has projected 108 students. In talking with Ms. Fox Antora, we had some discussion about, she, she's been around for, for quite a while, and she's never experienced a kindergarten enrollment over 100. And, you know, even though this is a unique year, and we haven't been able to have the normal connections that we would have with our, with our local pre-K programs, we are, we are not anticipating enrollment that, that large for kindergarten. If we were, you'll see that the projected class size then would be 21.6, and that would, that would, would trigger us to want to come back and, and talk about the, the possibility of adding a sixth kindergarten teacher, because 21.6, I think we would all agree, is, is a pretty large class size, particularly at the kindergarten level. And then you'll see the, the kind of going all, all the way through the, the grades up to eighth grade with the projected number and the projected class size. I also have a star next to fourth grade. Currently, there are, we have four fourth grade teachers. So our recommendation for this upcoming budget would be to, to secure a fifth, fourth grade teacher, and that salary, it would be at $75,033. And that would be in order to have that, that class size at around 19, 19.2. And so you could see, without that position, again, those fourth grade classes will be very large based on the projected enrollment. And, you know, I think that over this, over the last several months, our administrators have talked about some of the volatility that, that we're seeing in, in enrollment, where we've seen a lot of students sort of coming and going, which we haven't seen that in years, in, in previous years. So we are really wanting to hone in to make sure that we are very prepared for our students who will show up for us in August. The other piece, and we, we talked about this a little bit at, at the last meeting, and that is just the recommendation of the PE paraprofessional as a restored position at $16,176. And just as, in general, you'll see that our projected enrollment for Staples is $540, and our projected enrollment at Keller is $299. Now, that number at Keller is significantly lower than where we currently are. So you can see that those numbers are, are, are pretty off. We are not anticipating that, that the enrollment will be down at $2, $299 at Keller, with our average class sizes at the middle school being around 19 or 20. That still gives us a little bit of room, but, but obviously always very much keeping an eye on, on class size. Any questions about our, our enrollment projections? And, you know, I, I'd be happy to, to have our, either of our principals weigh in to, to add or clarify. I know that they spend a lot of time with these numbers on a regular basis as well, and could also give more of a historical perspective if, if needed.
Clarence, a couple of times you referenced, sorry Jenny, go ahead.
Nope, go ahead, Randy.
You, you made a couple of references that, that you don't expect the numbers that are on this board. So should we be using these numbers, or should we be using some different numbers?
You mean, I made a reference?
Sorry, not Clarence, right now.
I don't talk about classroom sizes, financial impact.
Sorry, right now.
No, Clarence doesn't talk about classroom sizes, but we've actually had a lot of discussion about, about enrollment projections, and just sort of what, what, what are the best numbers to use going forward? I have not used Prada projections in, in my previous work as a superintendent, and I know that, that, that we've sort of seen, principals have experience, have much more experience sort of thinking through this. I, I felt like it was important to show the enrollment projection. Kim, or, or Sue, do you guys want to talk about sort of where your thinking is related to what that projected number is?
Yeah, I'll start. Dr. Prada is projecting 108 kindergarteners. I haven't seen 100 kids, well, you can see Sue's current grade six is 102, 105, 113. I haven't seen them in 79 years. And I think, given the circumstances that we're in, is part of it. But I also know from having reached out to the preschools, many of the preschools are either part-time, or their numbers are not in any way commensurate with what they've had in years past. So as of today, I only know of 54 kids that are eligible for kindergarten. We've, we've contacted, what is it called? The Easton Patch? Is that at the online newspaper? We put a letter in the scoop, parents, if you have a son or daughter eligible for kindergarten next year, reach out. I have 54. So I just think the 108 that he's projecting is just unreliable. So I went with five sections, and I think it's going to be lower. And then the fourth grade, I think Dr. Harrison explained it really well. The third grade number is 91. And I forgot what Dr. Prada, Dr. Prada's 96. And I think class size is going to be really just too big. So I'm asking for five sections of grade four.
Kim?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Prada's projections, those were, those were all pre-COVID, correct?
They, well, yeah, for kindergarten anyway, he uses the birth rate, so yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot attached to that.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah. Sorry, Jenny, yeah, I think you were.
Yeah, I was just wondering how withdrawals might factor into this?
Yeah, actually, it, right now.
If that is included, if you've replaced.
Share mine.
Say, say it again, Kim?
Right now, would you mind if I just share my screen for a quick moment?
Absolutely. Or I absolutely would not mind.
Words.
No, that's really anticlimactic. Holy cow, where's all my?
Thanks for sharing, Kim.
I know.
Very existential, like I, I get it. I get what you're trying to say.
I like the purple, though.
That is cool.
Well, John, you're by yourself, if you understand.
Oh, I'm so sorry. So there's a document that I show you guys every single year, where I track.
Yes.
The additions in the withdrawals for years and years. So you can see the trends. And the trends continue to be the same, with the exception of fourth grade. Every grade level ends up getting many more additions than they do withdrawals. Fourth grade is 50/50 in all the years of data that I've been collecting. Kindergarten, I just don't know. That, I just think that 108 is really unrealistic.
Right now, is this an appropriate time or venue about discussions about projections that we had earlier today?
I, I mean, I think that that would be fine.
So just on the board.
Can I just finish my, sorry, just that kind of the connection to this. I was just, I wasn't talking about sort of like typical withdrawals. I mean, like withdrawals due to COVID. You know, students that have fully pulled their kids out of the school as opposed to distance learning. distance learning. I didn't know if those students had been factored back in. Are we sort of assuming that they're going to come back into the mix of the numbers for next year? And then my other thought was concern about a sort of a surge in like an unexpectedly high number of kindergarteners of folks who may have chosen not to send this year because of distance learning and will hold a year in that we could have an unusually large kindergarten class because of that delay due to health concerns. Also possible.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I and this is all helpful and and maybe Clarence is going to jump in with some other numbers. But maybe we just, you know, Kim, you give us your numbers and Sue, yours and and Dr. Prada, you know, thank you, but I tend to focus on the numbers you guys have as opposed to what he has. You guys are a lot closer to it.
Sorry, Clarence, thank you.
Along that venue, I have used Dr. Prada in other districts. I will be transparent and say that I moved away from Dr. Prada to another vendor because of, he just relies just on birth rates and a lot of things affect enrollment beyond birth rate. So I have presented a proposal to Rydell from a company called Malone McBroom, who does some enrollment projections for both Westport, Darien, Weston, and do some planning work for the town of Reading. They can do, I I've used them also when I moved from Dr. Prada. I like their work. They file. They use birth rates, housing transactions, a lot of different, they do really nice thorough work. So they're ready to go. But I, like I said, we were to want to make sure so the boards are on board, the way we would do it. It's the proposal is about eleven thousand dollars for all three districts. What I would do, I wouldn't request any more funding. We have a position that wasn't filled at central office. So I would just take money from that position to pay it. They can get the work done in four to six weeks. So still right in the middle of our our budgets. Process. To me, we need another set of sort of professional eyes beyond what we had with Dr. Prada. We had some issues with Joe Barlow issue. I've had like a two-page list of errors that Joe Barlow found in their numbers. And that gave me pause and gave me a flashback to what I used to use on the previous district. So I started looking around for another alternative. So I do have this proposal. It's just a way to be executed. We've actually collected the data they requested to get started. We just haven't gone on that step because, right now, it feels important to let the boards know that we were thinking about this and we wouldn't, like I say, we require any more funding from the board since we, you know, we would pay for it out of this vacant position, but it's, they do, I provide sample copies to Rydell to share if you all want to see. They, I have an example of a new report for Westport and an update report for both Darien and Weston, so to see the quality of the work that they do.
Is this something that we want to table at the tri board meeting or does it need to be done earlier than that?
You can take it at the tri board meeting, but each passing day means it pushes out them getting the results back. So I, what I'm doing is sort of asking them, based on our privilege to pull the, I'm pulling information, say, look, we're training that way, but I can't I can't sign the contract yet. So if you can just get started on the data I'm pulling, and they've seemed to be amenable to that. So we can wait till the tri board meeting, Randy.
Well, it's either that or we have three separate motions at each of the, at the meetings. And we didn't have it agenda, but we could add it tonight if if that, if that's something we want to think about.
Look, I would say this, I would like to share you guys so you can see the reports. I want, I want you to sort of sign about how I've seen like examples of the work product. So the tri board meeting works. That gives me time for you guys to review samples of their work from other districts. And then if you like it, don't like it, and you can share that at the tri board meeting. If you don't like, we can find another direction.
Okay, works for me.
And I have that all packaged and ready to to email to you following this meeting. So that so that we could be reviewing that and be prepared to to take action as we go forward.
Okay.
Clarence mentioned the the current vacancy in the central office position. And it reminded me of one point that I forgot to speak to when I was talking about the director of technology and digital learning. So while we continue to have a need for for ongoing data analysis, I I took this sort of the last several months and really just trying to get a real sense of where we are with our central office needs that that I feel are more immediate. My recommendation in adding this director of technology and instruction position or the technology position is to utilize the funds for the the data analyst position to not fund that right now and apply those funds to to the the salary of the director of digital learning and technology. So I I just wanted to mention that. We'll talk about that more when we get to the budget workshop and get down into really talking about the line items, but I felt like it was important to note that as well. I am going to go back to sharing my screen. I have just a couple of additional slides that I wanted to speak to. So one is just related to special education in our junior bridges program. Ms. Del Conti has done a really great job over several board meetings, kind of giving us a picture of of what things look like in special ed and and the planning for next year. And with that, thinking about the the pieces of our programming that we want to sustain and and also build out. So what you'll see when we get into the details of the budget, you'll see a decrease in bases BT, and that's at Staples and then an increase at Keller. And so that's a position that will be transferred from one school to the next. So there's no cost increase, but you'll see that sort of decrease and increase reflected in both of those districts. I just wanted to lift that out. One of the other pieces that you'll see is an increase of a point five social worker to a one point O social worker. And at Keller, with the intention of that position supporting both our junior bridges students, but then also working with with our gen ed students. Some students who have support plans where they need to be working with the social worker and then just also that person supporting the overall mission and vision of the school. And so those are two pieces that I wanted to left out related to special ed programming.
I doubt before you change, does you want to make note that fifty one thousand for the social worker? That's the total. So it's only fifty percent of that would be an increase because fifty percent is already in the budget. So the increase is only twenty five five.
Thank you, Clarence. And then the last piece, just as a as a hint to what you'll see and how we're thinking about sort of the next steps with digging in into the budget deeper is really kind of focusing our our discussions at the next workshop around these overall budget categories. So looking at salaries, benefits, transportation, obviously, I don't have to go down and and read through all of them. But but also lifting out what to what percent is salaries of the total budget? And so, you know, we we talked about this at the at the previous budget discussion last month. I'm really saying, you know, so much of our of our recommended budget for next year is already spoken for based on salaries and benefits or our contractual obligations. And and so when we start talking about where we have some some flex, more flexibility, it it's in some of those smaller areas. And so I just felt like this is a a good way for us to think about these categories. And then helping us to start sort of at the bigger picture and then always being able to drill down. And we'll be able to, we'll put, have a clear dollar amount, then talk about for each of those budget categories. This is what salaries were in are in this current fiscal year, what the proposed is, and then what that percent of increases, and we'll do that for each of those categories. And that that will be sort of our guide to digging deeper into the next steps. And so with that, I'm going to stop sharing and entertain any additional clarifying questions.
Yeah, but total, sorry.
It's okay. Can I say that the social worker number seemed awfully low? We really have a full-time social worker for fifty one thousand.
You're right, because I'm looking at, I was reading the wrong line. That that represents the fifty one thousand doesn't represent the increase. I was looking at, reading off the wrong lines, my apologies.
Okay, because I was just wondering who you were going to find. We had that would be in that position for that amount.
And if that was, I was gonna. A bunch of them because some staff may need to work also.
All right.
Does your proposed budget have a total number and percent of percent of increase year over year?
Clarence?
It does. Do you, you, you want me to share that, Rydell, at this point, or you want to wait till next week?
So so Jeff, I prefer to wait till next week. We could, we could share that number. I I will tell you, it is where we are, the the approach to this budget process for this first year. I felt like it was important for us to put all of the pieces in here and then start sort of working backwards from there. So we know that we're not going to come in with a recommended budget that that starts with a five. But what what we'll see when we get to this next budget workshop, we're going to start with a big number and then be able to have some really good, meaningful dialogue around where is it? What are the things that we want to focus on and and prioritize? I'll come in with some recommendations as well with with that. But I feel like for particularly for this first, going through this first budget process as a new superintendent, to me, it was really important to to be able to have some of that discussion. And so I know that that it is easy to to see a huge number and have a heart attack. And so I want.
Oh, no, we've, we've had, we've had numbers on first go rounds that have been stroke causing, and yet we're still all here. So it's there was a couple of years ago, the the number out of the box was seven, seven point six two. And we had a lot of people running to the men's and ladies room to try to recover.
I can tell you, we're under that. So we're also
Can I, then, can I ask what you're doing about health insurance?
So we, yes, we we've put in a plug number, basically flatlined it for this year, waiting for the January twenty six tri board meeting where you all will make some decisions based on the input for the consultants about what number you want to place in this. So right now, it's just been flatlined.
Okay, so, all right. Right, because if they say seven percent, which I think is what they're going to tell us.
That's the point. That's why we're saying we don't want to give you a number because it's going to change based on the decisions you all make. And we don't want to have the consultants come three different times. So on the twenty six, when they come, they're going to get you all to make some decisions.
That's right. That's right.
I'm, Clarence, I'm going to come back to you for a second because while you're technically the newest person on the block here, but your perspective from where you were, the other districts coming in here, sometimes you get mired in the weeds after you've been here for a while, but you're not there yet, hopefully, because you're still relatively new. You look at how we spend our money. Do you have any comments or thoughts or or not yet, or maybe you will, or you do already?
Yeah, Randy, I actually, I do have some sort of thought. So like, while Rydell was talking there, I did some sort of was playing around Excel while other people presenting. So if you, you can, you have the number, if you look at salaries, benefits, transportation, central office and utilities, just those five categories, you're eighty nine percent of the budget.
Yep.
Now, we know salaries and benefits are going to be slightly inflated because we have some new positions in there. But even you take those out, you're still going to be eighty six, eighty seven percent of your budget. So I like to take the opportunity. I've always had this conversation with boards and committees, like you spend all this time talking about the budget, but the vast majority is already baked. So why are we talking about these unless you're going to take that that political deep dive to the deep end that you're going to cut teachers with, nobody's going to do because no one wants to have that political fallback. Why are we talking about all this other stuff when you really only got ten percent of the budget that's really worth talking about? So when I look at it, when you're talking ninety percent of your budget is essentially spoken for and you're on the edges about the new FTEs, that's one thing, but you're at ninety percent. So the question really becomes, let's talk, talk about those thematic issues that Rydell was talking about, the director of technology. And then some of those sort of, I mean, when I look at it, your supplies and equipment, under three percent, purchase services, under three percent. That's remarkable, really, because most time purchase services include sped costs. You're under three percent for that. So it's sort of like, that's sort of mind-boggling for me. And we've got some proposals, not just in, not in Easton mother district, about creating internal programs to try to bring that even further down. And I, I think about it, so purchase service includes tuition. That includes managed school tuition, non-negotiable. So if I break it out into smaller categories, managed school tuition is non-negotiable, outplay students, non-negotiable unless you build your own program. So you're even gets, it gets, I can get you props at the ninety four percent of things that you don't have much say in the matter. Or if you have a city, you have to spend money to create a program to save money down the road because of cost avoidance. And if you're willing to do the cost avoidance, I've done it before. I, when I was in Stratford, we literally created two new programs, ended up shuffling six different classrooms between four different schools, just to avoid costs down the road of sending kids out of the district. If you're, if you're bold enough to do that, you can save money, but it's, it's a hard sell sometimes because it's, it's not, you haven't gotten the bill yet. You're saying, we're going to spend this money to avoid a bill down the road and then it can grow. That means it it it's sort of a compounding effect, Randy. You manage like compound interest. The more program space you have, the fewer kids go out. It's more money you save, but it's hard sometimes if you understand cost avoidance versus actual dollar out of your pocket right here and now. So when I look at it, I see a real lean, like you guys are like running like on, look, the auditors are in the in the district today. And we had a conversation about, the system is like, it's running very efficiently, but to the point where we may need to give a little more like pushing because it's, if something breaks, because the issue we have at central office, we have twelve people, four of them are executive, three secretaries. You're left with sort of a small percentage of people doing all this work. One of them gets sick, twists an ankle. What happens? And that's why this audit has had to come in because we couldn't get documents fast enough because while they're trying to audit us, we're rolling out a new financial program, an HR program, we're doing budget. All that's going on at the same time, and we got dedicated staff, but there's only so many hours in a day. And I find out I've got staff members, got computer laptops that are ten years old with no, and we were having Zoom meetings that have cameras on the, on the laptops. It's just all this sort of stuff that's sort of like you take for granted. And for instance, I explained this to John and Chris in Reading today. I took for granted, we had certain account codes built into our structure. We're having to pause our rollout of E Finance Plus because our artists can't drill down because our account structure only goes to a certain level. So now I have to go add these new codes. That's why your sort of budget presentation is going to be delayed because I've got, I spent the weekend building out the code. Now I got to spend this next weekend getting into E Finance Plus so we can run reports in time for next week. All that sort of stuff is, someone probably knew about it, but never had the time and resource to do it, given all the different things going on. So I'm actually sort of impressed of how efficient things are using because you're getting a lot done with seventeen, eighteen million dollars. But at the end of the day, you got some choices to make. Healthcare, big driver, new programs, big driver. Everything else is sort of not much to talk about. You really, to me, your focus is going to be on, what are you going to allocate for healthcare? What are you going to do about these programs? You address those two questions, everything else sort of falls into place.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so one thing I would add to that. And and so in in trying to create a a budget with with this as the backdrop, you know, we're also trying to think when it comes to new programs, what are ways that we could get the most bang for our buck? And so you, when you're, when you're thinking about a potential position add, you want to really kind of anticipate how much professional development could we pull from that new position in so in continuing to build the capacity of the staff? So again, that, you know, to Clarence's point related to outplacement tuition, it becomes sort of the same approach, but for 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 working with our human capital. So it's the cost avoidance because you you bring in a director who could build out bill capacity. So you're focusing that attention on on building teacher skills rather than necessarily having to bring someone in from the outside, right? And then there's that that internal capacity that's built. There's also the 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 piece of helping with the the cohesion across the districts. So, you know, I will say, and now having been in central office for four months, you know, it working to stay very cohesive, that that's a, that's a a lot of energy in and of itself because it would be very easy, you know, for for every, for things to be going in different directions. because it would be very easy, you know, for, for every, for things to be going in different directions, but you really want to make it tight and think about the, sort of the continuum of learning K-12. And so so those are, those are all pieces that as I'm thinking about prioritizing programs and, and components of the budget, I'm also trying to think about continuing to be really efficient and, and really thinking strategically about where are the places that we could get the most bang for our buck? Not just in year one, but, but that, that will continue to pay dividends over the course of multiple years.
Yeah.
John, do you mind if I share my screen for a quick second? I think I want to show something to Randy and Jeff. I think they will appreciate.
Please do.
Uh, it says one person participating shared the time. So I'm, okay, there we go.
Okay, good.
All right. So just Randy, and can you guys see that? This sort of Excel spreadsheet?
Yes.
So just to keep you an idea, this is sort of our basic structure right now. And the column, the far left of those categories, we showed you all. So just so you know, the second column is sort of how it's broken down in our accounting code. So right now salary certified is sort of a dumping ground for every certified position. So our auditor asked the question, what are we spending on sped? I can't tell them if I hadn't to go in and pull out all the sped related costs. So we're going to have to build out. So in going forward, after we get this done, salary certified, I'll have teachers, administrators, sped teachers, pre-K teachers. You name it. And so it'll be class. So that's sort of the level of detail we don't have. And we, that for sort of that presentation I, I told you guys about, right now I just have this sort of, and what the auditor's even said to us, they didn't want it broken down. So right now we'll go down to benefits. We have, we have health, health insurance certified. Auditors ask if we could break that out in further respect. So that way when they have to do their audit, they can pull the sped stuff out. And we can show you, these are all the sped related costs. That could be supplies, equipment, whatever. But we don't have that structure. So that's what we're trying, we, we started, we discovered this last Thursday. I spent the weekend trying to think out the codes to build it out. I spent today with E finance plus talking about how, what's the quickest way to do it? Cause they were talking about doing July 1st. I can't wait to July 1st. I get it, need it done now. So we've worked out a sort of habit approach that my, my team's got to spend this weekend, this upcoming weekend getting it done. Cause in order to get it done, we have to have it for our next payroll load, which is next week, which is also in your next meeting. So we've got this remaining days of this weekend, the weekend and just sort of build this thing over, stress tested for errors and then present to you all, say, hey, here we go. So it's sort of like, and oh, by the way, we're still trying to run the district and, you know, pay bills. I just wanted to show you that. So, so to see what the, the, the sort of obstacle we sort of discovered in the last four or five days. Like I can tell you like in these large groups, but if you ask me, it's okay, Clarence, how many, what are we paying for guidance counselors? I'd have to go literally look into an Excel spreadsheet that Vicky keeps to tell you that versus, versus going into our financial platform, hitting a button and have it print out and here you go.
Yeah.
I'll stop sharing. I just want, so you sort of see the, I, I know Jeff and Ram getting an idea how you guys think. I think that that probably addressed some questions you were having in the background.
Yeah, I can't wait. I can't wait till the 21st.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. That concludes our discussion and possible action and brings us to public comment. So a couple of notes coming into public comment. Throughout the meeting, we've had a series of attempts to disrupt from a number of sources. Seemed to be concentrated in five, five individuals that I think we identified there have either jumped out of the meeting or in the midst of some of the more disruptive behavior, we, we did remove them. So we, we are going to be careful inside of the public comment, just to make sure that we're actually hearing from members of the, the community and that we're having a civil conversation here. So I, I can, I'm going to ask if, when members of the public, if you are looking to make public comment, please raise your hand using the, the tool in the participants window. And I'll just ask that people are in fact using real recognizable names. So we have a question from Stephen or a, sorry, comment from Stephen.
Hi, Stephen Constantine, 605 Morehouse Road. First, I want to say I won't categorize anybody on this call as the first speaker did in the opening comments. It's a small featureizing other people's points of view is part of the problem. It's also, it's also, can you hear me okay?
It's a little bit cutting out. It may be helpful to get closer to the microphone. It was cutting out a little bit. Sorry. Go ahead.
So I think trivializing other people's points of view is part of the problem. It's also pretty divisive and outright. It, it suppresses the type of conversation I think this town really needs. So she should be embarrassed. As for the communication that Dr. Wright Elson sent out this week about the Capitol riots, I can only say that I expect that from him as a leader in our community. And I expect him to challenge our teachers to tackle these difficult topics. With that said, what I don't expect from him as a leader in our community is the post-inflammatory divisive and hateful posts that categorize half this country as terrorists. Which by the way, goes against everything he and the social justice groups say that they stand for. The double standard has to stop if we, if we really plan to do this together. The post was unprofessional. It was disappointing at best. And it's something that I would not expect from a superintendent. And I believe he owes the community an apology. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Okay, seeing none. Moving to board member comment. Jenny?
I'll go. My comment is related to just expressing appreciation to our teachers for this, again, large transition and shift in learning models. It occurred, I, I don't think I really took it quite as seriously until I sat down myself with the emails from both of my children's teachers to go through the lists of materials about what needed to come back, what was going to stay home, what was going to come in for a couple of days. And just what a monumental undertaking it is to, to continue to make these changes from, from mode to mode. And just to ask the community's patience, you know, for the next few weeks. I think it's probably going to take us a good two or three weeks before everybody kind of settles back into a routine, you know? God willing, we're able to stay all in. You know, but this is a big transition week for all of us, families, kids, teachers, administrators alike. Next week is going to be another transition. The following week is going to be another transition. And just that we all recognize, you know, how significant that is, that these are not small moves. It's sort of like we said, you know, let, let, let's go visit, you know, let's go visit Mars, but no, wait, hold on a second. We're going to, we're going to take a move. We're going to make a moon landing. You know, so these are really, we're steering the ship. We're making big, big moves here. And, and just to express my consistent gratitude for everything that everyone is doing to try to keep the educational opportunity and experience consistent to express caring and love for our kids and families. And, you know, for all of the work that they're doing to, to make these transitions as smooth as possible. That's it.
Thank you, Jenny. Any additional board member comment? No? Okay. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Jeff.
Second.
Thank you, Randy. All in favor? Unanimous unanimously adjourned at 10:29 PM.